Everyone, I'd like to call, speaking to order of the Scott County Board of Adjustment, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, six thirty P M., held at the Spring Lake Town Hall, two oh three eight one Furlong Avenue, Pear Lake, Minnesota. First item on the agenda is, uh, introductions of, uh, planning commissioners, uh, Donovan Henshess.
Here.
Gary Hartman, here. Ray Huber.
Here.
Chad Robbie.
Here.
Barbara Johnson.
Here.
Lee Watson.
Here.
Tom Bonhoff.
Here.
Also in attendance, uh, county staff, Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, pla- principal planner, Nathan Hall, associate planner, Barb Simonson, our deputy clerk to the board, and, uh, Scott County Commissioner, Tom Wolf And, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, minutes from September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, up for approval.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Adjustment Minutes as printed.
All second.
Motion by Commissioner Bonhoff, second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, one of the two.
Motion carries six zero with one abstaining, Ray Huber. Next item on the agenda is the, is a public hearing for the Kinney variance, P L. number two oh two one dash zero eight five, located in section three, Sand Creek Township, and the current zoning is A one, and Greg Wagner will present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, as you indicated, the, uh, first item is the requested variance, uh, which is a twenty-foot variance to reduce the required road centerline setback, uh, from one hundred feet to eighty feet. On the screen is the, uh, site location map of the, uh, five point six acre parcel, um, property is located in section three of Sand Creek Township, um, for location purposes, uh, property is along Bluff Drive, and this is just east of U S Highway one sixty-nine, which is shown here to the west. Uh, now you see an aerial photo of the property, um, just for some background here, uh, Shane Kinney, who is the applicant, um, purchased this property in January of two thousand twenty-one from Bruce endorsed Coghill. Uh, the Coghills had previously owned the property since the nineteen seventies. Um, in two thousand twenty, the Coghills reached out to county staff to inquire as to whether, uh, this parcel was a buildable lot of record. Um, county ordinance, uh, requires that for a lot less than ten acres, to be a lot of record, it had to be created and recorded prior to October, uh, nineteen seventy-one. Um, we found through that research, uh, in two thousand twenty, that this was a build, or this was a lot of record. Um, you can see the parcels to the south, um, are all, uh, built upon, and many of them were, the homes were built in nineteen seventies. So the Coghills did their research, found it's a lot of record. Uh, according to the ordinance, it is buildable, uh, subject to meeting all, uh, county ordinance standards such as, uh, setbacks. Um, one of the issues with this property, uh, it's hard to see with the trees, but, uh, there's a, a ravine that cuts through, uh, the central part of it east-west here, and that, uh, qualifies this property as a bluff area. Uh, the county enacted a bluff setback, uh, in the mid-two thousands, and that setback was thirty feet to a structure. Um, so in, in the summer of two thousand twenty, natural, county natural resources staff met with the Coghills on the property, uh, to do a site investigation and determine if there were buildable areas on this property, um, with the bluff setback and with the road setback. Um, through staff's site visit, it was determined that there were buildable areas on the north side of the property, um, and that it was suggested any construction on the property, um, should meet the setback to the bluff. So as I scroll forward here, um, here's the survey that the applicant provided. So the area on the crosshedge here would be area that is, uh, designated as bluff and would require a thirty-foot setback. Uh, the issue is that when you apply the thirty-foot setback and the one hundred-foot, uh, road centerline setback, it only leaves a twenty-foot, uh, area for, uh, a structure to be built. Um, staff suggested that the applicant, Mr. Kinney, review this, uh, actually, I guess, in two thousand twenty, staff did notify the township of this, uh, potential setback question on this property, and then in summer of two thousand twenty-one, after Mr. Kinney purchased the property, he did meet with the township and talked about, uh, requesting a variance to the road setback because it is a township road. Uh, it was indicated he did receive a verbal, uh, affirmation that the township would be supportive of that. Um, so he made his application now for a variance to the road setback, which would, uh, he, he's indicating here a proposed house and a proposed accessory building. Um, the lot, the dash line that runs here would be the eighty feet, um, so it's a twenty-foot variance so that the structures would be at eighty feet. The justification for the variance is that this is a legal lot of record, it was created prior to county ordinance standards. Um, he is meeting the thirty-foot setback. It was noted in your staff report that in August of two thousand twenty, uh, the county adopted, uh, standards that increased the structure setback to fifty feet, however, this lot existed before those changes, uh, so the thirty-foot setback would apply. Um, there was a memo from Scott County Natural Resources in your packet where they supported the variance request to the road centerline, uh, versus in any variance to the bluff, just to keep any structures away from the bluff line. Um, and it was noted in some of the criteria that many of the homes in this area, um, do have, there's a lot of ravines and steep slopes, uh, so we do know that there are a few structures that are probably within a bluff setback, but many of these structures were built in the nineteen seventies before there is any bluff standard. Um, so by granting this variance, we're not treating Mr. Kinney any different than some of the, a lot of the existing homes in this area. Um, and it should be noted, I think we, we messaged that to you today, um, that Sand Creek Township, uh, did hear this request, uh, at their October seventh meeting, so last Thursday night, uh, because it is a setback variance to a township road, and the township did recommend approval of the request. Um, I would stand for any questions. Uh, the applicant, Mr. Kinney, is here, as is, uh, Chad Sandy from Sand Creek Township.
Uh, great, uh, on the variance, I, I think that's a great thing that they're keeping the thirty-foot from these, uh, slopes, because I've been out on these slopes, and it can become unstable in areas, so keeping it further away from the, uh, from the bluff line is a good idea. I would rather have it closer to the road than bluff itself, so, it's a good idea.
Any comments by the board? Hearing none, this is, uh, uh, open, public hearing, if someone would like to, uh, address this issue, please step up to the podium, write in your name and address, state your case. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All no.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henshess, second by Commissioner Huber. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. Uh, before we enter, before I entertain a motion, um, I did, um, check with the Scott County Soil and Water staff regarding this, uh, application and the bluff, and also, uh, discussed with Sand Creek Township, and I'm comfortable with as well, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for determined variance, I recommend approval of the, uh, twenty-foot variance to reduce the required road centerline setback from a hundred to eighty feet, and noting that town board has recommended approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Variants, uh, moves forward, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, another public hearing for Dory variance, P L. number two oh two one dash zero zero nine seven, located in section three, Sand Creek Township, and the current zoning is U E R, and Greg Wagner will present.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, on the screen, you see the site location map of the Dory property, uh, the actual address is one seven one one five Bee Line Drive. Um, I do want to point out, uh, again, for locational purposes, uh, Bee Line Drive, uh, Bee Line Drive, so it's north of Bluff Drive, one sixty-nine again is to the west, so this is just east of, uh, U S Highway one sixty-nine in Sand Creek Township. So I do want to point out, uh, one thing I'm going to mention in my discussion, you can see on the parcel map, the entire property is outlined in red, and then you can see a little gray box here, um, I'll describe that in a second, but the, the property, uh, was originally two parcels, and it has now been combined into one property. So the request before the board tonight, um, is a setback variance from the required fifty-foot bluff setback, uh, to a septic, uh, septic tank, uh, which would be fifteen feet to the bluff. So this is a thirty-five-foot variance request. Um, the applicant, Barbara Dory, um, owns this seven, uh, or approximately eight acre parcel, um, as indicated, it was two properties, when originally created, uh, back in the seventies, again, there was a, a one acre parcel around the building site, and then seven acres, um, that surrounded that. The bluff in question here is basically the eastern, or northeastern, eastern border of the property, um, so the applicant is requesting a variance so that she can locate a septic tank, uh, fifteen feet from the top of bluff. Um, the Dory home was built in nineteen seventy, so this is prior to, again, county bluff standards, um, and so it had a septic system, and the applicant is looking to sell her home, uh, so a compliance inspection was done on the septic system, uh, this summer, and found that the septic is not in compliance. Uh, the reason for the failure, the non-compliance, uh, puts it on a replacement schedule that they get five years to replace. However, as indicated, the applicant is looking to sell her home, and as, uh, contingency on selling her home is looking to replace the system sooner. Um, so she met with county staff as well as the township to kind of resolve, uh, several issues, uh, there's some road issues that she's resolved with Sand Creek Township, but one of the issues is replacement of the septic system. So this is the site map that was in your packet, uh, that shows the proposed replacement system. The reason for the variance is the, the drain field will be located south of the home on that larger seven acre parcel, uh, but as indicated, Ms. Dory has combined the properties into one parcel, so now everything's on one lot, uh, so there's no setback issues crossing property lines or anything like that, but the septic tanks need to be located east of the home. Uh, there's a couple of reasons for that, one is the plumbing of the home with the original septic system comes out the east side, uh, but number two, and the main reason, uh, that was outlined by environmental services staff, is that the well is located in the front yard, so up near the road. Um, there are setbacks to, uh, wells, uh, fifty feet to a hundred feet depending upon depth of well. Um, the, the setback requirements from wells are so that wells don't get contaminated with wastewater from, from septic systems. So, um, as I zoom in here, you can see a little bit better here, um, so the well meets the one hundred-foot setback to the sewer line that goes to the septic drain field, um, the tanks cannot go to the north or to the west because they would not meet the setback to the well. Environmental Services staff feels that the well setback here is more important, so there's no groundwater contamination. Um, the septic tanks are designed to be fifteen feet from the top of the bluff. Um, Environmental Services staff has gone out to the site, met with the septic designer, who is here, if you have any questions for him, um, and they provided a memo in your packet that, uh, outlined the reasons why they would support this variance request. Um, this is just referencing the memo. Um, but essentially, um, the bluff areas are highly susceptible to, um, having issues with steep slopes and, and other geological instability, however, Jesse Krasinski, who, uh, went out and did the site visit, he is a geologist, uh, so he did investigate the, the bluff and the septic area, and feels confident that there would be no, uh, negative impacts from granting this variance. Uh, the applicant also did attend the Sand Creek Township Board Meeting last week, and did also receive a favorable recommendation from the Township Board, uh, so as you, as you see, uh, county staff is recommending approval of the recommended variance, uh, as is the township, and a- as indicated, the applicant and her septic designer are here, if you would have questions on the septic design, uh, otherwise, I would be happy to try and answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
Greg, um, where was the old septic system?
Might have to have the septic designer. I believe it was north of the home, is that correct? Yep, yep. You have, you, you.
And your question?
Where was the old septic system?
The old septic system goes around a little hill on the north side of the house, it was an old trench system. And the old tank comes out the east side of the house, it's a walkout basement, so the new tank is going to be very shallow, just like the old tank, maybe a foot of dirt on it, so it'll only be six feet deep, not going to impact the bluff very much. Mr. Chair, you want to state your name so they know who you are?
Ellen Reek.
Ellen, uh, as far as failed, is it septic system that failed before? It should be mostly sandy soils up there, and surprise infield system fail.
I didn't do the compliance inspection, so I can't answer that.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Reek?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for Greg. Greg, this is more of, of general information, I don't think I have a problem with this, but, um, in reading the, uh, town board's recommendations that, uh, the owner and all, all future owners be aware of the risk of property loss of the bluff failure, um, where it's like, but we've got some questions or concerns, um, for the county and us as, uh, uh, committee here, for future owners or the existing owner, if the bluff fails or shifts or what have you, what exposure have we got here? I mean, even, let's say even the insurance companies, for example, homeowners insurance companies, yeah, let's say they say, well, you know, we're not going to cover any claim because the county should be responsible for knowing whether or not that's a solid piece of property, just for my knowledge.
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbie, I, I don't know legally what the county's exposure is, um, we, we do the best we can with the information we have, you know, we have our experts look at, um, the, as I said, Jesse is a geologist, so he went out and looked at the, the slopes and suspected where the tanks would go. Um, I don't know that the county has ever had, uh, an issue, having approved a permit where something has fallen into a bluff, I, I guess I, I don't recall that we have had that situation. Um, the fifty-foot setback to a septic system has been there for a number of years now. Um, I guess because it's to a tank, they feel a little bit more comfortable versus a drain field, which is going to be putting water back into the soil. Um, this is a very wooded area, so hopefully a lot of stable tree roots and things that keep that bluff area more stable, but, um, as Mr. Reek said, this is, should be a shallow tank, um, it's not the drain field, uh, the old tanks were in this area and didn't pose a problem.
Greg, you brought up a good point. This is a public hearing, um, is Barbara Dory here? Barb, would you mind coming up to the podium, signing your name and address? Barbara, um, going through the notes here, and at the Sand Creek Township Board Meeting, um, they have notes here that, with, uh, understanding that the owner and all future owners are aware of the risk of property loss if the bluff fails. So I wanted, um, I wanted to get this on record at, at the planning and zoning meetings, so it's on record that you are aware of this, um, is it ever?
And the house is in the process of being sold, and I have talked and talked to the new, the people who are purchasing about the, that the septic system, we were going for this variance and what it encompassed, and he said he understood.
Okay, but I just wanted to hear that and put that on record.
Mm-huh.
And I also, uh, checked with the, uh, Soil and Water staff today regarding the bluff issue and also the septic township, and I'm on the Sand, Soil and Water Board, and I, I've experienced, witnessed what sloughing can do on those bluffs.
I've been there forty-four years, and I've seen nothing come back, but we have a lot of trees there, and there's a lot of roots in that, so we've been careful not to take any trees out there so that it kept the area stable.
Yeah.
That's all I can tell you about that.
Yeah, no, thank you. Is there any other questions for, for Mr. Reek?
Um, I didn't get your name.
Yeah.
Um, how do you, say there's two or three owners after all this, how do you let them know never to plant a tree or dig down if it's shallow?
I guess I can't answer what, what they're going to do.
Is it recorded? I mean, is there something?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Johnson, so the, the permit, the septic permit is available, if any future, future owner, you know, if, if the current buyer sells in five or ten years, a new buyer, you know, can call the county, and many people do their due diligence when they're buying a home, and contact us or contact Environmental Services and ask for that information, so, um, it's, it's definitely something that if they're doing their due diligence, we would provide that information to them.
Thanks, Greg. Do we have any record of any properties in this area that have had a bluff failure?
Not to my knowledge, uh, Commissioner Henshess, no. The, uh, the reason, oh, I'm sorry, the, the reason, the reason the setbacks were increased from, like, for structures from thirty feet to fifty feet, um, there's been issues like along Sand Creek where the golf course is, um, but the creek is heavily eroding areas there, we don't have that generally in this area, these are pretty wooded, um, ravines, so they're, like, as Ms. Dory said, they're pretty stable, um, so, and, and I guess to Commissioner Robbie's question, or before, just a reminder, we, we are looking at this because we're replacing a, a failing septic system, so the other aspect of this is the environmental aspect, and there aren't too many options here if the system is not replaced.
Well, Mr. Chair, uh, Greg, I see the house is setback, close to thirty-foot setback already, the house is probably the most important thing, and the septic tank has some issues that's pretty minor compared to the, having a house having a problem. I, it seems reasonable to have the septic where it's at.
Questions by the board? Again, this is a public hearing, if someone would like to, uh, place their opinion on this issue, please step up to podium, sign in your name and address, and state your case. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bonoff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain, uh, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close, public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, based on the criteria for variance consideration, I recommend the approval of the requested thirty-five foot, uh, variance, reduce the fifty-foot bluff setback to a septic tank.
Motion by Commissioner Bonoff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Noting that Sand Creek Township has already granted a deal.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman, uh, you alluded to the town board recommendation.
Yes, you do.
And I did hear, if, if you also made part of your motion that the risk stays with the owners?
Well, that's, I, I kind of, that's why I brought her up there to make it on public record, that she's aware of.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you've got that covered.
So, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
You. I'll entertain a motion to close the Scott County Board of Adjustment. So moved. Motion by Watson?
Second.
Second by Robbie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So meeting is adjourned.
I called the order of Scott County Planning Advisory Commission Meeting, agenda for Monday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. I'll start with, uh, roll call, uh, Commissioner Henshess?
Here.
Commissioner Hartman?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Robbie?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Commissioner Bonhoff?
Here.
Also present, uh, across from me is, uh, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner. In addition, uh, table over there in the corner is Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board, and I know that, uh, Tom Wolf, our county commissioner, is in the audience as well. Our, uh, first, or first, or second item of business is approval of the September thir- thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Advisory, uh, Commission, uh, Minutes. All the commissioners have been sent a copy of the minutes, are there any additions or corrections or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the September thirteenth minutes.
It's all moved to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, all in favor vote aye.
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 One of the two.
With, uh, one extension, so six ayes and, uh, I'm sure Huber will be abstaining from that. Next item is consent agenda. We originally had posted three items on the consent agenda, we are only going to, uh, have one on the consent agenda, the other two will be heard as public hearings after the consent agenda is approved. Uh, the items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of this item unless a planning commission board member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be moved from the consent agenda to be considered separately. The item that we have in the consent agenda this evening is the B J. Halloran Acres rezoning, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine two, it's request for rezoning of eighty acres from A one Agricultural Preservation District to A three Agricultural Preservation Density District. Location is section twenty-eight, uh, Bell Plain Township, and current zoning is A one Agricultural Preservation District. Uh, would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Um, I will, I entertain a motion to approve this one item on the consent agenda at this time.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as written, item three point one.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Huber, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes, so that item has been approved, appear for, uh, that item that has been approved. The next item is our public hearing, it's, uh, Martha's rezoning and flat, it's, uh, two parts, uh, it's number one, a request for rezoning of ten acres. Uh, it's number one, a request for zoning of ten acres from Rural Residential Reserve District to Rural Residential Two Reserve District. The second part of it is a request for preliminary platte and final platte of Marks Farm consisting of five lots on ten acres. Location is section sixteen, Spring Lake Township and current zoning, uh, is Rural Residential Reserve District. And Nathan Hall will be making the staff report. Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, the subject property is located in section sixteen of Spring Lake Township. Parcel is largely open, uh, with several productive acres. There's a wetland in the northeast part of the property. Uh, the property is currently developed with a single family home and two accessory buildings. The, uh, twenty forty comprehensive plan guides this area of Spring Lake Township as rural residential growth stage, uh, which allows parcels to rezone to rural residential, single family, or the RR two district, as you know. Uh, lots may be platted to, uh, a minimum of two and a half, uh, two and a half acre minimum for the RR two density. And the applicants are requesting that rezoning along with the proposed subdivision. Uh, the applicant's intent is to create four lots from the ten acre parent parcel, uh, one for the existing home and three for the vacant, uh, three vacant built for parcels. The, uh, primary and alternate septic sites have been identified for the proposed lots. Uh, Scott County Environmental Services staff have reviewed, uh, the project for compliance, Scott County Septic Ordinance, uh, and provided a memo regarding what items need to be addressed. Uh, Department has noted that septic, uh, site layout needs to be modified to meet the wetland setbacks on Lot One and field drainage tile needs to be identified and existing wall needs to be shown and soil logs, uh, completed. Um, no grading is being proposed as part of the platte. Uh, the home grading would occur after the time of, um, after, uh, building permit approval at that time. Um, it is proposed that less than one acre would be disturbed by the driveways and, and the home site. So that would eliminate a need to incorporate stormwater volume control practices. Uh, the regulations do require conservation easements and those conservation easements, uh, will be filed with the final platte and in coordination with the Fire Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District. Uh, the proposed lots, uh, would utilize access from Fergus Avenue. Uh, the county's twenty forty comprehensive plan does identify a future road connection along the southern part of the property. Uh, the county highway department is recommending that a minimum of sixty feet of highway east along the southern boundary of Lot Three, uh, dedicated to preserve an option for the future, uh, connection. And, uh, the county highway department memo is attached to your staff report. Um, while all the lots would have access to Fergus Avenue, Lot Four does not have frontage on Fergus Avenue. That's the, the one towards, um, what could be called the rear of the property or furthest to the east. And, uh, rather it maintains a hundred and fifty feet of lot width along one hundred and eighty-ninth Street East. Uh, one hundred and fifty feet is the lot width minimum in the RR two district and must be maintained between the front setback and the home site. The applicant met with county staff and township representatives at a development review team meeting on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, at the meeting, one hundred and eighty-ninth Street was discussed as if it was a township roadway. Uh, one week ago on October fourth, a resident of one hundred and eighty-ninth Street East brought, uh, to staff's attention that the roadway has been privately maintained. Uh, after inquiring with Spring Lake Township, county staff learned on October sixth that the roadway is indeed a private roadway, uh, and it was placed by the resident in two thousand and six and continues to be privately maintained. Uh, this means that Lot Four, opposed Marks and Farm Platte, would not front on a publicly maintained road and does not meet the requirements of the Scott County zoning ordinance. And so based on the new information that's come to light, uh, within the past week, Scott County staff is altering the recommendations that's in the staff report. Uh, staff is recommending continuing this item until the November Planning Advisory Commission meeting. Uh, so the applicant has time to, uh, work with staff and, uh, also the request to, uh, be in line with the Scott County zoning ordinance. And, uh, the applicant, uh, we have the applicant here and also there is a representative of Spring Lake Township present as well.
Okay, and what is the date of the, uh, November eighth?
Eighth, uh, that would be on October eighth, November eighth.
November eighth, okay. Any questions from the rest of the board?
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate now to ask the representative from Spring Lake Township if he sees this road being, uh, well, four houses on there, correct? Is it still a private road?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, and, uh, Commissioner Johnson, I, I believe there are five, uh, home sites on one hundred and eighty-ninth Street East. And, uh, it is.
Do you have the township, uh, representative come up and please state your name. Thank you for speaking this evening.
No problem. Ted Kowalski, Spring Lake Township, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Um, yeah, we discussed this a little bit earlier and we would not right now, that, that I can say, we haven't had this as a board discussion. We would bring this up Thursday night for a full board discussion. Hasn't been our policy to kick on more roads. Got a bunch from you just a couple of years ago, so we're not looking to add more. So, but we could give you a better answer after we meet Thursday night, all three of us.
Okay.
But other than that, we don't have a problem with the platte. We were in the dirt meeting. Last we saw it was in March. Saw the dirt meeting and we just don't, it didn't click for anybody that that was a private road. Um, but other than that, we're fine with the platte. So it's really your ordinance that you have to have a hundred and fifty feet on a public road. So we would, I think, gotta talk to my other board members, defer to your decision on that.
Okay, thank you. Hey, um, at this point, uh, I think based on the information, I'd look for a motion to continue this meeting for the November eighth meeting.
I move we, uh, continue this motion till, I think we should hear from the applicant.
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Chair, uh, I believe the applicant would like to.
Okay, come on up. The applicant's here. Come up and speak. Good evening.
Hello, Board. Uh, Randy Kubis, I'm with Kubis Realty. I represent, uh, the property owner, uh, Peter Marks. Uh, when we had, uh, started, uh, this project, you know, we had, uh, conferred with Greg Wagner and other planning members about, uh, lot size and width and zoning and so forth. And, uh, one thing, uh, that we also, you know, looked up is the road system. And this is right off of Scott County's website and this shows, uh, the property that we're dealing with. And this shows a labeled road, one hundred and eighty-ninth Street. Um, if you go to, um, uh, Scott County's site and you view their township roads, um, a light shows up, you know, showing where the roads are and one eighty-ninth is showing us being a, some type of road on mapping. Uh, if, uh, any of these people were gonna be serviced by, um, uh, some type of fire truck or some type of emergency vehicle, their address would show up at one hundred and eighty-ninth Street. It won't show up as Fergus Avenue. So, um, therefore it appears like this is, uh, a publicly maintained or is some type of, uh, public form. We looked, uh, through the deeds that are available and it appears that, uh, in the past, uh, the lots that were to the north, uh, own a sixty-six foot strip that they granted as an easement and that created one hundred and eighty-ninth Street. Uh, there's a number of, uh, cartways or roads like this that are maintained by individuals, uh, that had been turned over to townships. Um, but, um, what we had decided to do with the platte, uh, at the beginning, and it had nothing to do with the road. It had to do with topography, uh, because the back end of this lot was, uh, was not suitable to pass with, uh, a driveway through wetland. We had all of the driveways come off of, uh, Fergus Avenue. So it's basically a techno, a technicality of, uh, right of way and, uh, to a publicly maintained road. And, uh, we would hate to have this development not, you know, continue on and be approved with four lots when, when, uh, Met Council is looking for density as much as possible, especially within, uh, this distance from thirty-five W. Uh, all of these roads are maintained, you know, by the township, uh, out in Fergus. All the people that drive in and out of this development use Fergus Avenue and we're gonna continue to use Fergus Avenue for this platte. So, uh, we'd rather not, uh, table the issue. We'd rather see if we could have a vote on it and see what, um, the Planning Commission, uh, believes. We did have a recommendation until about a hour, you know, three hours ago of approval. I had gotten a call from Nathan saying that they changed their recommendation based on one hundred and eighty-ninth Street. It had nothing to do with the topography. It had nothing to do with the access out to Fergus. So we would prefer to have a vote on it if we could and I think it's a legitimate platte and it meets all of the requirements.
Any questions? Uh, I see his point.
Thank you. Um, is there not, uh, designation of a built roadway? I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm asking staff for this.
Yeah, our ordinance requires all new lots to be on a publicly maintained road. So the issue here is, um, verifying that it's not publicly maintained. So if that's the int- uh, situation, then we have to come up with some remedies. There is a variance process that could accompany this platte, ask for a variance from that rule. Um, so it's a, it's a process issue. But right now, if, uh, the applicant is looking for a decision tonight, we would recommend denial because it does not meet our ordinance.
It, it, can I have just one more second to state this? So who owns the roadway? That's my question because, um, if the publicly maintained, whether it's private or publicly maintained, the, I think the intent of the ordinance is that you don't have a lot that doesn't have public access. Because that's a privately owned roadway and we plotted a lot, a lot on it, it could lose access. And I mean, you could, the neighbors could say, no, we don't want them coming down that road. And that's the issue more than who's maintaining it, but who actually owns the road? And i- if the road has been, um, if the roadway has been turned over to, on the county or is part of the road system, then it's publicly owned, regardless of which whoever maintains it. And I, I think that's the issue here for plotting a lot on that. And that, and that's the question, I guess, I'm trying to ask and, and get answered here and I don't know if there's an answer.
I don't know if we have an answer tonight and that's why we were not looking for a decision tonight. We're, uh, requesting tabling it to look into this matter further. If the applicant wants a decision, then we, I will, we would recommend denial.
Chairman, I know several, many, many years ago, Spring Lake Township recorded all their roads. And I don't know if you can research your records and see what came up when you recorded, if that was ever recorded? Not recorded, okay.
Yeah, several townships have gone through the exercise of plating all of their cartways. Helena Township was one of them. And, uh, it was because they had issues like this. Um, here there's five people that are on a road, um, that, uh, you know, theoretically are on a shared driveway. And, uh, we find that, and I haven't examined everything completely, but there might be some of them don't, that don't have proper easement on their deed. Um, so it's just a matter of time that this is gonna be become more of an issue. Uh, we're trying to keep it from being an issue. Um, we just wanna have four lots and we have access out to Fergus Avenue and we're not gonna interrupt anybody's use of the road because we can't cross the wetland with the driveway and nobody could. So.
If we, if we table this for a month for the next meeting, you know, I hate ready, fire, aim. And it seems like we had a plan and now it's all changed. Must give staff enough time to look at all of the issues and I'm saying there's a lot of issues here to try to give us a better feeling for whether or not we should recommend it. We'll go in a month.
Yeah, Commissioner Henshaw, that does give staff more time to, uh, look into this ownership question, the maintenance question, more time to work with the township on those. Also give the applicant different remedies if they, if it does need to be a variance process and that could land on a November agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Chairman, but it seems to me the applicant does not want to table he wants to ask. Correct?
Thank you.
That's what we were coming to the meeting for.
So if it's denied, can he come back? We deny his request?
No, it's really a recommendation. The, the board makes the final decision. And so your recommendation would go to the county board. County board would look at this situation and make a final decision. If it is a denial, I think there's a, a cooling period where the applicant has a certain number of days before, uh, they can reapply for the platte.
And, but we propose either to vote on it now, vote yes, or deny it or table it, correct?
That is correct.
For specific reason, uh, Mr. Chris, why you don't want it tabled to answer this question?
I don't know what kind of evidence we could bring forward that would help our case.
Chairman, it seemed like the township may discuss this item at their meeting on Thursday night.
Mm-hmm.
What if they said, okay, I think we should because there's five houses on here? Otherwise, maybe they would decide to make this.
I don't know. That would be up to the township. Um, they'd have a better feel for it. If you wanna ask him to come up to the podium, maybe he would wanna talk more about it.
Oh, that's about all I think he was able to say about full board.
Okay, great.
But I also heard, um, Brad say that they, they need time to investigate it to try to find other ways to make it work if, if it isn't gonna work this way. I don't think they're trying to find a way to turn it down. They're trying to find a way to make it work with all of the information.
Make it legal regardless of the, of the status of the roadway, which is what we would want.
Um, I believe it can concede to a tabling if that works the best for everyone.
Okay, thank you so much for, uh, bringing your information forward.
Yeah, no problem. My pleasure. We're aimed to please.
Thank you. Those are the public hearings. Does anyone else wanna make comment on this before we? Okay, I'll, I'll entertain the motion here at this point.
I'll, I'll just, just wanna say one thing. We will be at the township meeting and we'll discuss it with them and we'll try to come up with the best ideas possible.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Chairman, I, uh, make a motion that we table this matter until three days, until we get more information. Not like Henshaw said, not that we're opposed to this, but until we get.
Okay. I have a motion to table it for the November eighth, uh, meeting, which I next meeting. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by, uh, Commissioner Henshaw. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This ma- motion is tabled, um, to November eighth. And I think staff has, uh, clear direction on, on, uh, the information from what the, uh, applicant said and, and the discussion with the commissioners here on, uh, the, what the information we'd like there. Hey, our, uh, next item is a public hearing. Uh, the Wood State I U P and it's the number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine three. It's a request for an interim use permit for Mary Woodgate to place a mobile home for an infirm family member. Section twenty-six, Helena Township, current zoning is U E R and, uh, Mr. Hall is making the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the subject property is located in.
Uh, the subject property is located in section twenty-six, Helena Township. Uh, the site is a ten acre, uh, square parcel with frontage along Red Wing Avenue. Uh, the parcel contains an existing home, detached garage and pole barns. Uh, the property is largely opened, uh, open but, uh, interspersed with trees. Uh, the property is located in the urban expansion reserve district where a mobile home for an infirm family member is in interim use. Uh, Mary and Greg Woodgate reside at this property, and, uh, Mrs. Woodgate's mother requires assistance in maintaining her health, as has been attested to by a medical doctor. Uh, they plan to have the applicant, Exel, which is, uh, Exelior Homes, uh, place a modular home on frost protected piers at the property. Uh, the owner has acknowledged that the home would be removed within sixty days of it no longer being occupied by the infirm family member. The applicants have been in contact with Scott County Environmental Services regarding the septic system requirements. The environmental services memo, uh, was attached to your staff report. Uh, the applicant's plan is to install a sewer line into the existing system, um, which is considered large enough to accommodate the additional use. Uh, the proposed modular home encroaches on the twenty foot, uh, setback as required to the alternate septic site, which is, uh, to the south of the, uh, existing site, and, um, so Scott County Environmental Services has noted that they would need to, uh, either adjust the positioning of the proposed modular home slightly, or, um, find a new alternate site. And all those items would need to be addressed through the building permit process. Uh, Helena Township Board, uh, considered the request at their meeting last, last week, and they did recommend approval, uh, with two conditions, uh, regarding, uh, current taxes and also the right to farm ordinance, the two conditions they regularly seek to make people aware of. And, uh, staff is recommending approval of the interim use permit, uh, based on the six criteria for approval listed in the staff report. And, um, have received, uh, a couple of calls regarding this, and so we may have some members of the, uh, public who would like to speak to this.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
I would have asked to pull this because it does say the applicant must modify the site plan or find a new alternate site. That was just disgusting. Did they, or they still haven't done it?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Johnson, uh, we have not received a revised, uh, site plan, uh, uh, for the project at this point.
So that means we have to prove it, right? Unless we, with the condition that it's the...
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Johnson, so the, um, uh, this would require, um, at least, you know, a slight modification of, of the plans, moving the building slightly further over. Um, that wouldn't be considered a significant, uh, change to the site plan, and they would need to meet all the requirements of Scott County septic ordinance, meet all the building, uh, code requirements, all those at the time of the building permit. So all that would be...
Thank you very much, Mr. Paul. Um, this is a public hearing. If you'd like to make comments on this application before us, please come up to the podium, state your name, and then there's also a sign up sheet to place your name on there.
I'm here on behalf of Greg and Mary Woodgate, uh, representing Exelior Homes. I do have the newborns in my hand, and I do have the design for the policy of the tank setup also. Um, and I guess I'd like to say that is, um, as Nathan had said, we meet the criteria, um, for the intent of the IUP, uh, we provide a township approval, secondary septic location, um, which will not affect the placement of the dwelling. Um, it will put the secondary location across the driveway, which is fully accessible. Um, and I think other than that, just, so Pete, uh, I think it was Pete Schmidt had sent the septic information, um, as long as the number of total residents met the criteria for the size of the septic system. Currently, there are five people living in Mary's house, Edna, Mary's daughter, and I make six total, so that is, um, fine. Um, and that's what I have. Any questions for me?
Chairman, I've got a question. Uh, I mean, stated here, you, you put it on, uh, frost piers?
Correct.
Do you remove the axles then too, when that happens, or?
Yeah, I mean, t- typically as, as a permanent setup, it's gotta be a frost free foundation, which Scott County is gonna, um, you know, follow through. They're gonna do all their inspections. Everything, all the running gear, everything comes fully off, and whether we recycle it, whether we take it off and just leave it under the house, because eventually, you know, the house will probably be removed unless they would sell, and then there is another IUP that would have to be present, you know, to be able to keep that house there, so that dwelling there. But yes, we, we do remove everything.
If it's no longer used for that purpose, how easy it is to get it off the property.
Yeah, it's, we do it all the time.
Yeah. All right, thank you for my information.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Are there other comments? Anyone else like to comment on this application before us? There's a sign up sheet at the podium, and then start your comments with your name.
Um, my name is Julie Patrick, and I live on Red Wing Avenue, just kind of any corner across, you know, the road. Um, we're set farther back off, so we really don't see it, but, um, you know, in five, I've talked with five different neighbors, just to kinda get a feel, what do you think of this? And of the five, two people never received a letter from Scott County. So that's unfortunate. Um, I know our mail, you know, in New Prague is, you know, um, in a tough shape right now, but, you know, for two of the five people that I've talked to, they didn't even know about this, you know? And so I, I just would think maybe to, I don't know, I don't know what to say. Um, I guess I've got questions, you know, like we had talked about, so if you move a mobile home in there, a whole new septic system, what about, you know, electrical, um, you know, uh, a well, a water? How do you, you know, how do you do that? And they said, "Well, within, um, sixty days of the infirm person not living there, they would remove it." But who monitors that? You know, and could they change those rules? And, you know, I mean, does it go from interim, meaning temporary, to permanent? Which I think most people in our neighborhood don't wanna see this, you know? So it, it's, I guess those are our questions.
Okay, well, if we can't get staff to ask or answer those questions specifically...
Right.
Um, to kind of...
And, and like I said, who monitors this? And who's to say the infirm person goes to a facility or passes away, I mean, whatever? And then could they rent it out and, and it just remains there for twenty plus years, you know? So that's just...
Okay, let's get those questions answered for you.
Okay. Did you want my address on here too?
Yes, form requires it.
Okay.
Could have, uh, the, the staff just respond to those questions specifically. Those are your questions.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, so regarding monitoring, if they were to, uh, if it was found that they, the infirm family member was no longer living there, um, and they were continuing to keep the, the structure there past sixty days, uh, that would be, uh, violation of the ordinance, so we would follow up on that. Um, regarding keeping it there for longer periods of time, this is an interim use permit, um, so there are very limited set of circumstances in which a mobile home, uh, placed in Scott County, this is, is one of those. Um, and so that's why it does need to be removed after sixty days. It could not be rented out after that. Um, we don't allow the mobile homes to, uh, rent it out, we don't, any use or any kind of secondary dwelling on a property to be rented out, so that is not something that applicant would be allowed.
And who's responsible for, um, making sure that people comply with, um, interim use permits? Scott County?
So we have a, uh, co-compliance officer who, um, really looks into different, uh, issues as they're, they're raised, and if the neighbors, uh, suspect that, uh, they're in violation of interim use permit, uh, they could certainly, uh, contact us at the zoning office and we could look...
Chairman, uh, don't they have to renew it every year and let you know early?
Uh, correct, Commissioner Johnson, yes. So they are required to report every year that they, um, they would have to create just a letter stating, "Are you in compliance with this? Um, our infirm family member continues to live here," and report in basically every year. So, um, our co-compliance officer does keep track of those, does keep track of those records.
And if the property is sold and, and someone else goes in there, then obviously the interim use permit teaches at that point, does not go forward with the property.
Correct, Mr. Chair, that's the, uh, the, one of the definitions of a... Uh, carried on to a future property.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hey, uh, just to clear something up, um, when a mailing goes out notice, um, uh, and let's say people say they never got it, there's several things that could happen. First of all, let's say they were mailed, they could have been lost in the mail, they could have received it, threw it away, or they could have received it and denied they got it. Uh, so my question is, um, when mailings do go out notices, is there a record of who, who all, who was all mailed? Who was on the mailing list? Is there a record, does the county keep record of that?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman, there, there is record of that, and, um, I don't doubt that, uh, they were sent out. We have record of all that. Our, our staff is very good about, uh, about doing that, monitoring it, keeping track of it.
Yeah.
Um, if for some reason there was some issue, um, in, from the time it left our building to getting...
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up, 'cause I have heard that statement before over here, and, uh, there's a variety of things to look at, and you don't right of way have to accuse the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
I just wanted to say one more comment.
Oh, sure. Let's just start with you. Please step up to the podium, because we are recording this. Thank you.
On the bottom of the letter, it said it was mailed on September twenty-seventh, and I'm like, and I got it on the twenty-fourth. And I'm like, how does that work? You know, so...
The mail, the mail service.
Thank you very much. I, I, I can't answer that.
All right.
Um, any other comments? Uh, that, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Henshaw, do I have a second?
I got it.
Second by Commissioner Watson. All in favor of what I?
Aye.
I, and at this time I'll entertain a motion regarding this application before us.
Mr. Chairman, uh, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the interim use permit for Mary Woodgate to place a mobile home for an infirm family member.
I have a motion, uh, by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The IUP application is approved for this item. Our next public hearing, the applicant is JNS Land CUP, number twenty twenty-one, G S zero eight seven, is request for conditional use permit for contractor yard with associated outdoor storage, location in section thirteen, New Market Township, and the current zoning is rural business.
Mr. Chairman, I have talked to the county attorney, staff today, and I have two conflicts of interest, so I'll be sitting out two of the five.
Okay. Is, is this one of them?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, please, uh, note on the record that, that Commissioner Johnson is recruiting herself from the discussion on this item at this time, and has left, uh, our hearing here. Um, so, uh, Mr. Wagon, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, uh, as you indicated the request before, the commission tonight is a conditional use permit for JNS Land LLC, uh, Jim Larson, to operate a contractor yard for an erosion controlled hydro seeding business. Uh, this property, or this request is on lot two, block two, Fieldstone Industrial Park. Um, to remind the commission, um, the Fieldstone Industrial Plat was, uh, considered earlier this year, or later, late this summer, uh, by the commission, and also then by the county board. Uh, it, the plat was approved by the county board, uh, in mid-August and recorded, uh, so the lots are showing up here on the screen. The subject parcel is highlighted in red, again, lot two, block two, Fieldstone. Um, this is a twenty-three acre, uh, site. Um, the parcel is located on the south side of county sixty-two and the east side of county road forty-six in, um, section thirteen of New Market Township. This is a zoomed in aerial of the property. Uh, you can see largely this parcel, uh, is open, uh, open agricultural land. On the northeast corner, uh, there's a wooded wetland area, uh, there's also woodlands on the southwest portion of the property, and, uh, those continue off the, to the parcels on the south. Uh, JNS Land is requesting the CUP, uh, for their contractor yard for an erosion and control and hydro seeding business. Um, the property is owned rural business reserve, um, this was created in twenty twenty, or adopted into the zoning ordinance in twenty twenty, after the adoption of the twenty forty comprehensive plan, uh, in twenty nineteen. The proposal here is to construct a ten thousand five hundred fifty square foot, uh, building on lot two that would house the offices and maintenance for the contractor yard business. So this is the, uh, proposed site plan of, uh, JNS Land. The, uh, ten thousand five hundred fifty square foot building would be located in the far western portion of the property. Uh, the parking for employees and customers would be located adjacent to that. Area, uh, in gray to the east would be, uh, contractor yard, outdoor storage, and also, um, storage for, uh, Mr. Larson's agricultural, uh, equipment and materials. Um, there are two buildings shown here on the north side of the property, uh, rectangular, uh, building here, and then another one here. These were applied for as agricultural buildings. Uh, Mr. Larson, uh, does farm land in the area. Uh, this parcel is twenty-three acres and was reviewed by the county tax assessor and the county building official, uh, when two permits were received for those agricultural buildings. Um, under state statute, uh, agricultural buildings are allowed if they are only used for agricultural purposes, and the property is classified by the county assessor as agricultural. Uh, the county assessor can split class property. What that means is, uh, the property could be agricultural tax classification, this is not zoning, this is tax, how the assessor classifies the property on tax rolls. So as long as they, uh, have ten tillable acres or ten acres in ag production, uh, the county assessor says that they would meet statutory requirements for ag buildings. Um, any areas used for, uh, n- uh, commercial purposes would be split classified as commercial, so this is something that the county assessor's office reviews. So when those buildings were applied for, the county assessor did review this, as well as the county building official. The applicant signed a application indicating that the... that those two buildings would only be used for agricultural purposes. Um, and he is, I believe, here tonight and can talk more if there are questions about his agricultural JNS Land, uh, is indicated in their narrative that they have twenty-five employees for their erosion control hydro seeding business, uh, that is, and two part-time employees that were, uh, as outlined in the business description in the staff report. Um, it was indicated, uh, that he does have the agricultural land in Scott and Dakota Counties, and I just talked about the agricultural, uh, buildings. Uh, the applicant proposes to have the, the contractor yard with outdoor storage of equipment and vehicles. Uh, it was noted that there are, um, these vehicles do include some semi tractor trailers. Um, that is consistent with other contractor yards, uh, vehicles such as semi tractor trailers, dump trucks, uh, skid loaders, uh, just farm tractors at, for erosion control businesses. Those are considered, uh, equipment that would be allowed in the outdoor storage area. Um, it was outlined in the staff report that the outdoor storage must occupy, occupy space other than the required front yard setback. Um, the outdoor storage must be screened, um, and it can be, uh, surfaced with class five, um, or other, uh, similar materials as approved by the county planning department. So the applicant is required by ordinance to pave the entrance and any parking area and any areas adjacent to, or to the sides of the building. Uh, but once they get into the outdoor storage area, that could be class five, and that's what's being proposed here. Uh, so this is a little closer look at the front part of the building. Um, so what you see here are the primary and alternate septic sites. Um, these are the grading drainage plants. Uh, should be noted in your staff report, there were review memos from Scott County Environmental Services. They reviewed the septic sites as part of the plat application. Those septic sites have been maintained, uh, fenced off through the site grading, uh, for the plat. So the applicant has, has provided, um, a septic design for the number of employees that they are proposing. Uh, that design has been preliminary approved through the memo that you saw from Dave Gunther with Environmental Services. They will be required to submit a official septic permit, um, for the installation of that system. Uh, in addition, once the building is constructed, as a condition of the CUP, all business uses are required to get a hazardous waste inspection, and, uh, most are required to get a hazardous waste license. The hazardous waste inspection by Environmental Services is, determines the level of hazardous waste that is generated by the business, and then that, uh, establishes their licensure. So that is a requirement of, uh, Scott County Environmental Services. Once the building is constructed and the business is operational, they, they will need to schedule that inspection, as well as any solid waste that may be brought to the property. A solid waste permit, uh, is issued through Environmental Services and the county board. So if the applicant would have solid waste materials that they bring back to the property, they are required to get a permit for that too. Uh, this just shows the back part of the property. Um, you can see that there are wetlands and then, uh, constructed stormwater facilities in the site. Uh, there's a stormwater facility on the back half of the lot as well. Those stormwater plans were reviewed as part of the plat through the resource management plan. Uh, that plan was approved for the plat. These, uh, construction plans have been preliminary approved by Megan Taska, our county water resources engineer. She will also review the plans once the permits are applied for. So it is, it was approved through the plat. She has reviewed it through the CUP application that will be recommended to the board. And once, uh, if, if the CUP is approved by the board and the permits are applied for, uh, the county water resources engineer will review those plans again. Um, as far as landscaping, so I identified on the aerial photo, uh, that to the northeast and to the southwest and most of the properties to the south, um, those are fairly heavily wooded areas. Uh, so the adjacent, um, homes are separated by a good distance from where the outdoor storage will be located. Um, however, the applicant is required to provide a certain amount of landscaping. Uh, landscaping is determined by either the site perimeter, one landscape unit per forty feet of site perimeter, or one unit per five hundred square feet of gross building area, whichever is greater. Uh, here, the site perimeter calculation is larger. Uh, so based on the site perimeter, they have to have a hundred and twenty-five landscape units. Uh, the applicant is proposing, uh, forty-eight new trees and a hundred and five shrubs and other plantings. Um, so the main focus of the landscaping is, uh, some new trees along the entrance, and then along the north corner, uh, screen the building. And then as I switch to the back half of the site, along the north property line, they're, uh, providing another row of evergreen trees because there is a resi- residential, um, lot to the north. So they are providing screening on that side as well. Um, the site plans that were in your packet, the applicant can speak to this as well. The north part of the site, uh, part of his farming operations and part of the erosion control business, uh, are large round hay, uh, straw bales. Um, so those are proposed to be stored on the north side of the site too, uh, which, uh, hopefully would add to the, uh, to the Um, the building, so the building plans were included in your packet, um, mainly an open building with large doors to bring in, uh, vehicles and equipment for maintenance. Again, any, uh, any maintenance that requires oil changes or other, uh, auto fluids, this is where the hazardous waste license, uh, comes into play, as well as storage of any, uh, fuels on the property. So most contractor yards, businesses do have fuel tanks. So if they are going to have any fuel tanks, um, that's again where that licensure comes into play. So we have hundreds of businesses across Scott County, uh, that have hazardous waste licenses that do this exact same thing. Um, the front part of the building here, or I should say the south part of the building, uh, has a couple offices and restroom facilities, uh, for the office personnel. Uh, elevations were provided in your packet. Um, the applicant did, uh, the applicant, or I should say the developer contractor, uh, does do a lot of these buildings in the cities of Savage, uh, Prior Lake, Shakopee. So, uh, provided some photos here. Uh, so this is an example of building in Prior Lake. Uh, this one, I believe is also Prior Lake, Prior Lake Bus Company. So, um, you can see they use different colors, different, um, yeah, oh, yeah, and different windows. So these are all examples of existing buildings in Scott County granted in the cities. Uh, this one was in Credit River, uh, which is now the city of Credit River. Uh, Prior Lake again, and then this wasn't, this is a newer building that they constructed in Shakopee. So this just gives you some example of what these buildings, uh, would look like. Uh, reference the memo from Dave Gunther, Environmental Services, uh, where requires septic permits, uh, holding tanks for any sewer drains, uh, required, and that's reviewed as part of the building permit as well, uh, and then hazardous waste inspection. Uh, Megan Taska's approval memo, uh, noting, uh, requirements that she will be looking for at time of building permit. And then, uh, the applicant did attend the, um, New Market Township, uh, board meeting, um, back on August thirty-first. The township did recommend approval of the request, and they noted a couple conditions. Uh, the first condition, hours be seven AM to six PM. Uh, ensure that it meets the RBR twenty dash four table, excluding semi tractor trailer parking, uh, and then same conditions as other Fieldstone Industrial Park applicants. Um, so to, uh, to talk to the hours, uh, I do want to note that staff did speak to, uh, town board chair Doug Dusold and vice chair Doug, or excuse me, chair Doug Kost and Doug Dusold, uh, the vice chair this morning. We explained our position, um, on the, the recommended conditions. Uh, staff is not recommending hours of operation. Uh, the basis for that is the county has not, uh, set hours for commercial industrial uses. Um, we have only set hours for mainly mining operations, um, mining operations that generate, uh, defined noise, crushing, uh, mixing, uh, drying of materials. Um, so that is really the only use that the county has established hours for. Uh, but in commercial industrial areas, the county has not established hours of operation. Um, and then with the semi trailer parking, um, they are referencing something that we will talk about in a subsequent, uh, application. Uh, but as I started the presentation off with the applicant's, uh, proposed use and having trucks, uh, the county has allowed semi track, semi trailer, tractor trailers, uh, as part of contractor yards in other areas of the county, other zoning districts. Uh, semi tractor trailers are used for other uses such as agricultural uses. Uh, many farmers have semi tractor trailers. Um, so we have allowed those for CUPs where those, uh, trucks have been used for, uh, as part of the business use. Um, last thing I'll mention, um, if you remember with the plat, um, there was a traffic study done which identified for the development, uh, around four hundred and fifty trips per day capacity. Um, this use, uh, did I get the right one here? Okay. This use, um, estimates thirteen trips entering in the morning, uh, five trips exiting, vice versa in the afternoon, uh, eighteen trips leaving in the morning and, uh, returning in the afternoon, uh, and then just other trips during the day. So they estimate with this use, uh, forty-two daily trips per day, and those would be seasonally, uh, April through October while the business is operating. Um, staffers recommending approval of the conditional use permit. Believe the applicant is here, um, if there would be any questions of him. Uh, I do not believe the township was able to attend the meeting tonight, uh, but the applicant is standing up. If you'd like him to come up and speak, I can.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Questions?
One question, Greg. You said there's four hundred and fifty trips a day is allowed, and I, I know there's a number of these in the same location. Is, I want to know if, if all of them total less than four fifty, or is the last one, it's out a lot when we get to it?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Henshaw, um, what we've asked the applicant, uh, developer to provide, uh, is a trip generation for each use, and we'll talk about those because we have five CUPs tonight. Um, there are a total of nine lots in this development now. Um, the applicant chose to combine two of the parcels, uh, so it, it went from initially proposed ten down to nine. Um, so as these CUPs move through, we would still have four vacant lots potentially. Um, we will review those and make sure they are consistent with what was presented in the traffic study with the plat. If the numbers change, we would want them to defend why they're, they're changing. But, um, so we're, we're just, it's something that we are monitoring as these applications come forth.
Mr. Chair, uh, Greg, hours, uh, I see the county says, uh, not restrict the hours and the township's was Monday through Friday, which seems like you have to have, if you're going to run a business, you have to be there a little bit more, just Monday through Friday, six to six. What was the reasoning for that?
Township?
Yeah.
Um, my understanding, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber, speaking to Mr. Dusold and Mr. Kost, there was a discussion with the neighborhood that was at the meeting, um, and concerns about light and noise. Um, so the township felt appropriate to recommend to the county through the recommendation that we set hours. Uh, but as indicated, something that the county has not done, uh, in the past. Um, so, yeah, staff, staff, because we have not done that and we don't, staff does not see a valid reason that this use would be any different than any other commercial industrial use. We don't, uh, see how this one would be looked at differently than other uses throughout the county.
It's not so much even hours, but it's Monday through Friday, not Saturday. I don't understand why that would.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber, um, in the discussions we had today with the township officials, it wasn't clearly stated as to their reason why Monday through Friday either. But ne- neither, both, Mr. Dusold and Mr. Kost indicated that they had conflicts and could not be here tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Wagner?
Mr. Chair, sorry, and Commissioner Huber asked about lighting. Um, that was one thing I overlooked. So, uh, just to clarify with the CUP, um, the applicant can add to this, but, uh, they are not proposing any lighting in the parking outdoor storage yards. The only lighting that they would have would be on the building. Uh, lighting anywhere on the site is required to be hooded and directed down, illuminate doors for whatever it's supposed to be shining over. Um, so the only lighting that's proposed is on the building. There's nothing proposed at this time in any of the outdoor storage areas or parking. Should they want to do that in the future, the county does have standards for lighting that are very similar to any city. Uh, so if you look at a parking lot in any city, or perhaps the parking lot in town hall here, uh, that lighting is hooded, facedown, and we do have standards for light intensity on adjacent properties.
Thank you very much. Yeah, could like to come up and make comment? Um, I don't know if you wanted to make any comment?
I, no, I don't have any comment.
I just had a quick question for you. We have this up, um, and I'm trying to figure out what area, what would be the surface of the entire lot. I mean, is, is it going to be, are you going to have grasses there? Are you going to have, uh, uh, class five?
Classified, yeah.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Class five.
Class five.
So the whole thing will be classified then?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a, want to be clear on that? And then your storage areas, those areas in the dark areas, there, is that what you're considering for vehicles?
Trucks, yeah, for, for the trucks.
Mr. Henshaw?
Okay, but I thought I heard that in order to keep the agricultural building, ten acres that's be tillable, am I incorrect?
Yeah, I think Mr. Wagner can help clarify that.
Chair, Commissioner Henshaw, um, the buildings were permitted as agricultural buildings. Uh, the property was classified by the county assessor as agricultural. Um, there are other statutory requirements. The main one is ten tillable. We, we do get a lot of calls from ten acre landowners who say, can I get classified as agricultural? The first regulation is, do you have ten tillable acres? There are, I didn't get into it, but there are exemptions for that. We do have people that have ten acres and they raise, uh, a certain number head of cattle. So because they, uh, use the buildings for, uh, you know, cattle, uh, corrals or, you know, hu- housing cattle, they can qualify that way too. Um, if the buildings are being used to keep ag equipment and the applicant or landowner has demonstrated that they have agricultural land in the area, that is another one. Um, I'd have to get the list from the county assessor, but, yeah.
Sounds like, I just heard ten acres tillable and I wasn't seeing it.
My apologies, that was sensitive one.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you then. So the agricultural buildings, they have like hay stored in them and brown bales and things like that, or just equipment for, is that basically?
Yeah.
How they use?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
This is a public hearing, and, uh, if anyone would like to, uh, make comment on this application, please, uh, come to the podium, write down your name and, uh, and your address and state your name, state your comments.
Uh, good evening. My name is Steve Castle. I live approximately quarter mile north of this development. I would like to, uh, speak briefly about- I would like to speak briefly about the township recommendation, because I was at that meeting. And of the five conditional use permits that were discussed, I believe this one came up last, which is why the hours of operation were listed. I think the board was trying to be consistent with the previous four. They also have on here that it meets RBR twenty dash four table. At that meeting, I was the only one that brought a copy of the table. No one on our town board was aware of it. They were unaware that the uses for RBR were different than industrial one, industrial two, and that the outdoor parking of semi tractor trailers is prohibited based on this table.
Okay.
It also talks about prohibiting freight transportation terminals, which, which did come up in that meeting, and I don't think that this particular business, that would be an issue. But also, it's important to note that at the meeting, no one objected to these conditions, not the applicant, the, excuse me, the owner or the developer. So I would, you know, I would use this recommendation as you move forward. That's all I have on this one, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Castle.
Good evening, Commissioners, Tom Grant, live at Black Walnut Edition. I think there's a couple of general comments that are going to apply to all five of these permits that I think at this point probably makes sense to bring to light. One, the Commissioners are probably aware as a staff that residents of Black Walnut Edition have sought legal counsel in regards to this issue. At its primary and highest level, the resoning of this property and subsequent plot approval, we believe is suspect, and believe also that our rights to due process were violated. That said, we'll run that issue to ground in the coming weeks and months. But I think it's important context as we consider what's going to go forward here. The comment around semi trucks, you know, is very clearly laid out in Table twenty dash four of county's own zoning ordinance as it pertains to RBR. And specifically, one of the key things to call out is that the specific always controls the general when it comes to a moderate law, right? So as you think about this, when it's specifically being called out as prohibited, even if the proposal is a secondary use, the specifics still controls the general. So I think that needs to be considered as we, as we go forward through considering all of these CUPs. I'll bring to light, because it kind of goes into, I think, five key concerns that we have generally speaking to this, to this permitting process. We talked about hours of operation, and I think just to make sure that the Commissioners here are crystal clear, the reason why hours of operation were considered and recommended by the town board certainly was at the behest of members of Black Walnut Edition. Really, the reality is that there's quality of life issues at stake. Currently, the developers undergoing massive excavation of the site is approved currently by the plat. That noise is being carried over into our development in every corner of it, right? So the idea that we're going to be having heavy equipment rolling in and out of here, potentially at all hours, is a matter of concern. When we talk about vehicles accelerating, heavy trucks coming in and out, that's a concern. That's informing why we believe hours of operation needs to be required here. We're not talking about a facility that's in the middle of nowhere. We're talking about a facility that is budding right up to a residential neighborhood who here to fore have enjoyed peace and quiet, specifically on weekends. And I hope you call can imagine how annoying and how troublesome to your quality of life that would be. I won't go too far into this, but I still think we need to explore lighting a little bit more. Certainly understand staff's position on that, certainly understand that there are ordinances such. I think we just want to make sure that, that lighting, even through ordinances, is not disruptive to our way of life. Again, see the city of Lakeville lit up, and presumably they are running lighting ordinances. Now we're talking about a development that's right on top of us. We have concerns with that. We talked about traffic before. As part of the whole plating process, we certainly understand and are aware that a traffic study that was bought and paid for by the developer came back with the results that have since been published and informed ultimately the county commissioner's decision to approve the plat. But we really do need an independent traffic study commission and paid for by the county, the state, I don't know, the Met Council, that analyzes the safety and practicality of this heavy truck, truck traffic coming in, contemplating peak driving periods. The last study was not done with that. Contemplating days and hours along with projected growth. That last study didn't contemplate those pieces. Then enforcement. We've already seen scope creep in some of these applications, we'll talk about that, right? And businesses get positioned in certain ways, but there are either growth plans that are being discussed, or new information that has come to light even since the town board meeting in terms of scale and scope of some of these businesses. So how is the county going to enforce those ordinances on the books, right? Staff has recommended simply changing zoning tables to meet unilateral needs of the developer or the, or the specific conditional use permit applicant. That's not why we have laws, right? We need to enforce the laws we have, not retroactively create them because somewhere else, elsewhere in the county, it's not being properly enforced. So further, the staff, it's stated by the staff that the activities projected by the RBR zoning is allowed elsewhere in the county, as I mentioned, and therefore should be, the table should be adjusted. If the zoning law allows for it, then perhaps that's where those businesses really should be, vice versus here, because it's very clear what the table says in terms of how this stuff is supposed to be laid out. Otherwise, we expect county to live up to its expectations and enforce the laws that exist. And then fifth call out I just make is, you know, as I mentioned, we are doing research in, in regards to the legality of this development, and as well as the process that was, that was undertook as, as part of its changing from agricultural to RBR zoning. And as such, there's a pending data practices request that is still outstanding as of this evening, at least that that's my knowledge and understanding. So with those kind of five concerns I think outlined, we humbly request that all the CUPs that are under consideration this evening be tabled for a minimum of thirty days until these issues are appropriately addressed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Greg Silas, and I live at Black Walnut, or in the development north of Fieldstone. And this regards to this cup right here, and then there's another one for sure that has to do with semis parked on there. Clear that the twenty dash four RBR doesn't allow that, so I, as Tom mentioned, I think at least a thirty day stay for, and not approving that tonight for sure. There's rules, there's laws, there's rules, and allowing, approving it for semis to be parked on there, from what I understand, two of the cups for sure, not legal. And we're letting you know that upfront, so I guess that's what I would say, uh, don't approve the cup here, and then there's another one for some other trucking company that's going to be parking twenty semis outside, so that, I just want to mention. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I might look for motion to close this public hearing.
Will we close the public hearing?
Motion by Commissioner Watson, second. Second by Commissioner Hentges, all in favor of what I, uh, discussion?
Mr. Chair, Greg, I was a little confused by township recommendation of hours. In our packet, it says Monday through Friday, but they say six to seven. Well, they must have took out Saturday and Sunday. I mean, did it change?
Uh, I'm sure...
When you look at the township recommendations, it says hours, seven, six P M. Does have restrictions and dates, just hours.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That is how I read it, yes.
Want to be about RBR twenty dash four table?
So Mr. Chair and Commissioner Hentges, highlighted in blue here, so this is our zoning table. In twenty ten, this table was created, previous to that, the uses that were allowed in each zoning district. So if you look across the top, we have A one, A two, all the way to RBR, I one, I two. Previous to twenty ten, when the ordinance was updated, all the uses were just listed in the respective zoning districts, and it made it very confusing to people looking, well, what can I do with my property? And some uses were in their own chapter, you know, such as bed and breakfast. That was in its own chapter. So if you were in a zoning district, you had to look into, it was confusing. So an effort was made to put together a zoning table that more clearly could show you in this matrix how, where you look across the top at your zoning district, and then you look down the first column at the, at the use, you see, okay, is this use allowed? So if, if the uses had a, you know, designation here, so here, outdoor commercial recreation use is allowed in the C one district, AD stands for administrative use. So this table was, intent was to try and help for residents, townships, county staff, everybody to make it clear what was allowed. What, what the township and the residents are referring to are highlighted in blue here, outdoor parking of semi tractor trailers in the I one, is, is an accessory use in the I one and the I two. And as the residents indicated, that will be discussed with other CUPs. The way staff is interpreting a contractor yard is contractor yard or some other business gets the CUP, so that is the principal use of the property. Outdoor, so the, the second line here, outdoor storage accessory to the principal use is an accessory use in the RBR I one and I two districts. So where we have contractor yards, the way staff has interpreted this for many years for these types of uses is that materials, equipment, such as bobcat skid loaders, you know, any, any construction equipment, and dump trucks, vehicles that haul them, those, all those things are considered, we look at that as outdoor storage. So if you have a semi truck as a contractor, it's considered outdoor storage, and that's allowed. We have many contractors, you know, in the Sand Creek Industrial area, Dairy Lane by the Highway Department, a lot of contractor yards, and they all have semi trucks, or many of them have semi trucks that haul equipment to job site. So staff's interpretation is that we're treating J and S Land no differently than any other contractor yard that we've permitted.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, I'll undertake a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, based, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit, CUP, for J and S Land LLC to operate a contractor yard for an erosion control and hydroseeding business. Be consistent with other businesses in the RBR.
Twenty dash four.
Hours of operation in the RBR district, no restrictions on those either.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hartman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huber, is there any discussion before I call for a vote at this time? Okay, no, a discussion? Uh, Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robby?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haas, yes. Is approved with, uh, Commissioner Johnson recusing herself from this. So let's move on to our next item, which is, uh, public hearing for Green Automotive for a request for conditional use permits for Sasha Ocho, construct and operate an automotive repair facility, including the leasing of space to other businesses. And, uh, that, Mr. Smith will be making the staff support. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So on the screen, you can see the site location for, uh, the property where the conditional use permit is proposed. The site is immediately west of the lot of the previous request, it's Lot one, Block two, Fieldstone Industrial. The lot is two point six, seven acres in size, on the southern portion of the plat. Go to the aerial photo, Greg. Here's an aerial photo of it. You can see on the southern boundary of the lot, there are existing trees along that boundary line, there's that lower area as well. The property actually fronts on two roads within Fieldstone Industrial Park, Larson Way, on the north side of the lot, and then Mason Brink Drive, I think, or Lane on the west side of the, west side of the parcel. I'm going to jump to the site plan. So here's the site plan for the property. Access would come off of Mason Brink Way, up the cul-de-sac there. The areas shown in white on this plan are areas that would be paved, that would be employee, customer parking areas, areas around the sides of the building. The building itself would consist of a ninety by ninety foot structure, eighty one hundred square feet in size. The applicant is considering at some point in the future extending that building an additional ninety feet to the east in this area there. As you can see, there is on this particular lot, a power line, a large power line. Greg, if you want to jump back to the aerial photo, you can actually see the, go to the aerial. On the aerial photo, you can actually see a couple of the large power poles there. I believe it's the southern hundred and fifty feet of this lot approximately is encumbered by utilities, and so the building can't be located within that utility area, but storage and stormwater facilities can go in there. You can see the primary and alternate drain field sites located on the northern portion of the property. Our environmental health has reviewed the information that's been submitted for those septic sites, and they are, they do find it adequate. Like Greg said for the previous one, they will need to apply for permits for those through the building permit process, and a more detailed dive into those septic locations and water use will all be looked at there. The applicant is looking at those areas shown in gray to the south and east of the building as areas for potential outlet storage. The uses that he has, Green Automotive is an auto repair facility, they do electrical work, they do hail damage repair, they do some more minor body work, and then he has another business, I think it's called Pacific Auto Group, where... Uh, and then he has another business, I think it's called Pacific Auto Group, where he has, uh, a license, a wholesale license right now. He is looking to, uh, modify that so that he could do some sales on this particular lot. Um, those vehicles would be stored as a southern, south and east of, of the building. Um, right now, the applicant is indicating a need for approximately ten, uh, storage spots for vehicles, and then a few trailers on the property to move vehicles around. So no large equipment or anything would be stored here. It'd be predominantly vehicles waiting repair, uh, maybe four or five vehicles for sale and, um, two trailers for, for moving, for moving these vehicles to and from. The traffic analysis for this particular site anticipated twelve forty trips per day, about five per hour, um, within the boundaries of the traffic analysis that was done at the time that the plot was approved. Um, most of the traffic coming and going here will be, uh, customers and employees. So it's gonna be more of your, uh, cars and pickups coming and going from this, this particular facility. Um, you did receive a letter today from an attorney, uh, Brian, um- Yep. Men essentially objecting to the auto sales on the, on the property. Uh, Greg, if you could go to the use matrix again. So, in, in the RBR district, we do allow, um, the, uh, we go to that outdoor storage thing again, Greg, outdoor storage area. So in, in this particular area, you can see, um, the item outlined in green. Open outdoor sales, rental and display areas, allowed as an accessory use within the RBR district. Open outdoor displays, rental display area as defined in the zoning ordinance as any land use, any land used or occupied for purpose of buying, selling goods, materials or merchandise, and for storing the same under the open sky prior to sale. So essentially, staff's interpretation is, as an accessory use to the auto repair, we could allow, um, some sales of vehicles. The applicant is indicating needs approximately five sites for, for vehicle storage that would be offered for sale here. So we feel comfortable that the ordinance does allow the outdoor sales as part of this request. With that, I would, oh, and the township recommendation for this particular site, pretty similar. Greg, if you want to jump in that. Oh, landscaping, let's get landscaping first. So landscaping on the, on the property, looking at, um, some spruce trees on the north side of the outdoor storage area, listing approximately three of those. Um, and then extending it around the rest of the north and, and west side of the property would be some deciduous trees, and then some additional shrubs in front of a parking area. The applicant has also indicated that he would be fencing the outdoor storage area for security and screening purposes. Uh, he would be fencing that with a six foot chain link fence with the screening slots, uh, included in it. So that would be part of, part of his request. Um, some to township recommendation, um, car sales are not allowed. I think we, staff feels as though car sales are permitted on this particular site. Um, and I think we've shown that on table, table. All storage, all storage prohibited, precipit, prohibited to be a salvage yard. Um, since we have a condition in there, they can't have unlicensed, inoperable vehicles stored here unless they're being, gonna get worked on. I think we've addressed that. All cars must have current license tabs, again, uh, unlicensed, inoperable. Uh, wouldn't be allowed to be starred, stored here unless they're gonna be worked on. Um, same condition, same conditions for Lot Three, Block Two. Um, I believe that is the hours of operation that we're coming to see on this one.
I just, a point of clarification. Talked about outdoor sales of some of these vehicles, a couple of cars they might sell. In that attorney's letter, he references indoor used car licensing. I think that sort of sets for me, it's like a car dealership. This is not a car dealership, is it?
Right, the, the principal use is certainly not a, a car dealership. Been talking with the applicant, um, he would like the ability to sell some vehicles on the site. Um, as they repair vehicles, if time is slow, they could pick up some vehicles, repair them and resell them, keep the employees busy for that.
I, I could be wrong, but I, I think it's kind of a common practice at some of these, uh, body shops like that. Uh, you know, they're taking in vehicles that are wrecked or hail damaged, fixing them up. Yeah, they take them to the auctions and dealers, but private parties can also go there and buy directly from the, I think, from the practice.
But it's not car sales operation, just, you know, just for me.
I will say, um, Ace Auto, that's in an industrial area down in, um, Sand Creek Township. They have a sales component associated with their auto repair. Uh, also in New Market Township, we have a, uh, another, um, auto body repair that's located on Newton Circle, near Elko New Market, and they have some sales associated with their facility as well. So it's usually a small number. It's not the predominant use of the property, but the, the operators would like the ability to sell a few cars if things get slow. I would also like to point out that the building that Mr., um, the applicant is proposing is consistent with the buildings that Greg showed you photos of for the, for the previous owner. Um, it would be the same manufacturer, the same contract, the same building. Uh, this particular building, it has three bays, one office and a couple bathrooms, so not a lot of, um, office area. It would be predominantly, uh, a building that would be for, for his, uh, repair business. Uh, he would want to lease possibly a portion of that, um, area, that work area. Uh, we do have a condition in the permit that requires any company that leases space from Mr., from the applicant to come in and get a certificate of compliance so that their use is compatible with building codes, septic requirements, the conditional use permit, the RBR district, and that would be reviewed by staff in the township.
Mr. Chairman, I think your attorney is confused because one place he talked about is RBR, another place he talked about is VRB, so.
Any questions, uh, for Mr. Smith right now? Thank you very much. Uh, we would like to make comments on this application at this time.
Um, Ann Lindgren, one one four two six, two hundred and forty fifth Street East. Um, my husband Greg and I live directly across from, uh, this Fieldstone Development. Um, I think some of the confusion about, um, Green Automotive and Pacific Auto Group comes from the letter that Mr. Boiko, which you all have in front of you and are planning, um, Marty Schmitz and Greg Wagner have also. The paragraph that states having a permanent garage space that I own would allow me to have more stability and consolidate space for both companies, Green Automotive as a body shop and Pacific Auto Group as a used car dealer. I'm also planning on changing from a wholesale dealer license to an indoor used car license, as well as planning on renting out a small section of a shop to a business that is the right fit. Currently, I have two part-time employ, people working with me, and I'm looking to expand to two to three full-time employees. In his letter to the township, to the planning commission, and we're assuming to the county eventually, he clearly states that he is changing from a wholesale dealer to an indoor used car licensed dealer. And so I think that is where the confusion and where the lawyer is involved with, um, this particular green, not green automotive, 'cause that is the auto repair, but the Pacific Auto Group, which, um, according to this, Mr. Boiko would like to have as part of that business as well.
Thank you.
Uh, once again, Tom Grant. Um, I think just a couple of things, um, I'd call out in addition to what Ann just mentioned. Um, it's again, very clear in Table twenty dash four that auto implement heavy equipment, truck, RV sales are expressly prohibited by the RBR zoning designation. So what they're showing you was other goods, and we're not showing you the actual explicit call out. And the, the table doesn't specify whether it has to be a retail operation or not. It says so. Says so. Um, this, I think, is part and parcel of the problem we have here, folks. We, we approve these things just enough to let the camel's nose get the tent. And then all of a sudden, the whole animal's in there. That's what you guys are in the process of making decisions on. And these flippant remarks about a typo in a letter from a, from a lawyer, not appreciated, and I think rather cavalier. In my ask of you, Commissioner Johnson, given that the landowner still is the same person who applied for the plot drawing in which you recused yourself, it seems to me appropriate to recuse yourself from all five of these. You gotta follow the law, folks. I didn't write it. Some of you, as we went through the plot discussion, recognized the error in moving forward with this. And to sit and ask these straw man questions that you know are damn well in violation of the law, ridiculous. So I ask again that a minimum of a thirty day tabling of this matter be put forth. There are serious questions that we have. The county has failed to yet respond to our data practices request. This is serious. Your decisions are affecting lives. Can do better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The applicant's here. To come on up to that podium. Evening. Did you want to make comments on your letter here, um, the last paragraph that was brought up?
Yeah, I just wanted to be, you know, honestly say what's my plans for that, whatever it is. And, uh, we're-
Could you start with your name?
Oh, my name's Sasha Boiko. I'm owner of, you know, owner of Green Automotive and Pacific Auto Group. Um, the reason I would like to change from wholesale to retail, to apply for used car license, where, give me a right to have a dealer, dealer license, because right now I only have a transit license. I only can move the cars from the one auction to another. And then my goal is not to turn this property in a used car sales. Uh, I wanna, still wanna do what other dealers do, um, have them, um, would like, sell the vehicles to dealers that can sell, and then, um, I'm sorry, I'm like a little bit nervous, nervous, so.
That's right.
Um, I would like, what I'm looking for, for the consignment with the, on the dealers, that, that the dealership, the used car dealer license would give me the right to do consignment. Right now, I only can take the cars to the auctions where, you know, I get way less money than, uh, uh, I would like to ask, you know, the Scott County to give me the rights for the five parking spaces outside. The cars would not be, uh, you know, with the huge balloons where, you know, I turn this into the, you know, Jeff Bell's or something like that. Um, I, around the body shop is like, as Marty said, that during the slow time, I would like to have the right to make a sale if I, you know, if I need to, the other, other dealers, you know, not able to do the, my consignment. Um, you know, we, my goal is, uh, to take the Green Automotive to the next level where the green energy comes in, we would like to specialize in electrical issues, would like to, uh, I would like to hire people and train into them, electrical vehicles, specialize in electrical vehicles. Uh, the hail damage, where the, you know, some, someone asked, that's, is it gonna be a salvage yard full of hail damaged cars? No, it was just an idea, and then, you know, I went for the, to school for it and learned how to do PDR, just to, you know, survive in this business. So, that's, that's what, you know, the reason I'm applying for the used car license, not to make sales over there. Just to have the right to sell, and then have the right to sell to the other dealers on a consignment.
So I understand, understand, right. Um, I'll use, uh, a couple of, let's call them car jockeys down in Newbury.
Yep.
One, he buys auctions and he has a sales lot, sells to people. The other one doesn't have a sales lot. He's got a little small office. I bought vehicles from him. And he'll, I, I'll tell him what I want, he goes and finds it, and he, the last one was up in, uh, Buffalo, Buffalo. So, I pay the right to check out to, uh, Buffalo Car Dealership, and then he pay him the commission. Is that what you're getting at?
No, um, well, the con, you mean the consignment that I'm talking about?
Yeah.
No, consignment is that when we have a vehicle for the repair, it goes from the auction. And then after the vehicle's fixed, it requires go for state inspection. With a wholesale license, you cannot do state inspection. You have to sell to another dealer. Another dealer does that, buys the vehicle from me, then does the inspection and makes a markup on it. So with the used car license, I can do inspection by myself, and I can choose a dealer that I can sell it to. Or maybe, you know, put a sale on their lot. That's what I'm trying.
I see. Thank you.
Like a good hard spring. Does this compare to what we had just north of Lydia? That, being vehicles, vans or something? Yeah. Does this kinda compare to that?
Possibly, a small amount, uh-
He was on a, just a acre-
He, he was on a home extended business condition, his permit, so he wasn't in a rural business area, he wasn't in an industrial area. So he was just a one man show, um, where this is gonna be, uh, three, four employees that, that are operating here, repairing and then, and then doing some resale. Uh, I was going to comment, we could limit the number of vehicles offered for sale to five in the conditional use permit. Um, we have the condition in there right now that all vehicles offered for sale, um, have to be owned and repaired, uh, by the applicant, and we could limit that to five as well in that condition. That's where this goes, um, to limit the size of what that can become. Sounds like it would work with the applicant. Just suggesting for you.
What do you, what do you mean by five? Just five throughout the year, five?
Five vehicles offered for sale at any one time.
At any one time?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, would that be harder monitor though, or?
Uh, probably not. I mean, you can go out there and somebody got out there for sale. If it ballooned to twenty, I think we'd be able to notice it. Maybe for six or seven, it'd be hard to differentiate, but, um, yeah, it could be monitored.
Any other questions to ask? Thank you for your comment. Asking more questions. Ask more questions. Anyone else like to make comments at this time?
Uh, Steve Castle, I just want to go on the record that under Table dash four, auto implement heavy equipment, truck, RV sales are not prohibited under Scott County ordinance. So if that, if that's the ordinance...
Are not permitted.
Not, sorry, not permitted. So if that is the ordinance, that is the law tonight. Thank you.
All right. Could you respond to that?
Well, there's a number of uses identified in, in this table. Uh, Greg Scott, up right now, highlighted in green, uh, the auto implement heavy equipment, truck, RV sales, only allowed as a conditional use permit in the commercial district. So what we are looking at, I mean, there's a number of lines here that, you know, are a little bit different, but here we do allow outdoor open sales rental for display areas accessory to a principal use. And that'd be outdoor sales for merchandise, which car could be determined as. And we feel like this use here does allow for that. Wouldn't allow for a car sales lot as a, as a principal use, but as an accessory to, and allow use like the body shop. I think if you limit it to five cars, it would certainly be accessory to the, to the body shop use.
Thank you. Any more comments? Three and none. I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like Commissioner Huber. All in favor of what, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And at this time, I'll entertain a discussion or motion?
Do we have something from your market?
Yes.
She made a motion? Did she made a motion or not?
No, she was asking if there was a township recommendation on the, on the overhead.
Yes, there is one.
Yes. With conditions?
With conditions. Um, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, I guess. No one else does? Based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit CUP for Sasha Boyko to construct and operate a multi-tenant building to include an auto repair businesses and leased space for other rural businesses. And to be consistent, consistent with the county RBR, uh, there's no limit on hours, and, um, but we are gonna have a five car inventory limit. Is that the right wording? Uh, for, for, that's for resale. Personal resale, business resale.
I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second, Commissioner Huber, motion by Commissioner Hartman. Any further discussion before I call for a vote?
Do we have to reference the New Market Township and that our staff is not in agreement with a couple of their conditions?
I'm not, I'm not including the New Market Township on my recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion before I call for a vote? All in favor of what, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. That passes, uh, as a seven, ten, and, uh, the recommendation of the county board. Uh, the next public hearing is, uh, MA Industries. It's request for a conditional use permit to conduct and operate a small semi truck service and repair business, including leasing of space to other businesses. Page in section thirteen, New Market Township, and, uh, RBR. And, uh, Mr. Wagner will be making that staff report.
All right, Mr. Chair, must have put on something here. Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, the conditional use permit application, uh, under consideration is for MA Industries LLC, Mark and Anita Strung, uh, to construct and operate a small semi truck service and repair business, and including leasing space to other businesses. This application request is on Lot Three, Block Two, Fieldstone Industrial Park, so you can see the parcel highlighted, uh, here in red. So this is just north of the first application, and northwest of the, the one we just heard. Um, so the site, uh, located here at the end of Larson Lane, um, it's adjacent to the, uh, Farmstead, which is just off the property to the northeast. Uh, the Janus Land application would be to the south and to the east, uh, and then vacant parcel to the, to the north. Uh, Mark and Anita Strung are requesting a conditional use permit to construct a twelve thousand square foot building, uh, for their, for their semi truck repair business, uh, that's indicated here on the, um, site plan. The twelve thousand square foot building would be centrally located on the property, uh, access would come off of the end of the cul-de-sac of Larson Lane, uh, that would be paved coming up to the building. Uh, the paved parking area would be located to the northwest for, uh, customers and employees. Um, and then to the immediate east of the building would be, uh, outdoor storage. Uh, the applicants in their narrative, uh, indicate that they have a business for truck repair and customer, custom installation and repair services for service type vehicles. Uh, the applicants, I believe, are here, so they can, uh, add to, uh, the types of vehicles that they service. Uh, the second part of the CUP request would be to lease, um, divide the building up, or the building will be divided up into four equal bays, uh, so their business would have three thousand square feet, and then there'd be three other bays, uh, for three other businesses to which they could lease. Uh, those businesses would need to be consistent with uses in the RBR area. Um, in their narrative, they indicated what they're looking for with those types of businesses would be vehicle repair, woodworking shops, plumbing, uh, and similar. Uh, so as indicated, outdoor storage, uh, for vehicles under repair, uh, would be allowed to the east of the building. Uh, they could have no, uh, unlicensed or inoperable vehicles stored in that outdoor storage area, uh, that you see there. Um, site grading, uh, plan is shown here. Um, again, the stormwater plan was reviewed as part of the plat, and the plans are consistent with what was approved. Uh, the septic sites are located to the north, um, so those have been preserved through the grading. Uh, and as per before, um, the septic design has been submitted for the size of building and number of offices and employees that are proposed. With the leasing to other businesses, um, the septic system is designed for a certain amount of water usage. So as with the previous application, leasing to other businesses requires a certificate of compliance. So, uh, MA Industries would have the CUP on the, on the property and on the building. As they lease out to other businesses, those businesses file an application with the county, uh, it would be reviewed by the township board. So that person or business would indicate what their, um, business would be, number of employees, we look at water usage. So environmental services through those certificates of compliance, uh, ensures that, whether it's number of employees or if the business is just a high water generator, that the water going into that septic site, uh, does not overwhelm the system. Uh, typically, they can require installation of a water meter just to keep, uh, monitoring, um, how much water is going into that system. Uh, since we do have a repair business again, and potentially if other leases would be in that industry, um, hazardous waste license and inspection is again required for any, any, uh, repair business or any, uh, any business that would generate, uh, auto or other hazardous fluids or waste. Um, the landscaping plan, um, based on the perimeter of the site, they are required to do forty landscape units. Uh, I mentioned the Farmstead to the northeast. Um, there are some woodlands up there, but to screen the site, they are proposing a row of, solid row of evergreen trees along that, uh, north boundary of the property, uh, and then deciduous trees along the east side and along the entrance, uh, and then plantings and other shrubbery along the building and, uh, uh, entrance to the property. So we showed you previously the examples of the buildings. Um, I think this one will look very similar to the one that was in Credit River, uh, so similar to this with just multiple bays, um, that go in, uh, that each potential tenant would have with, with one main office. Um, so that's kind of an overhead view of kind of what this building would look like. Um, so four separate bays. And again, all, you know, the different uses, different bays, that's all reviewed by the county building official, um, at time of building permit. So the building gets a permit, and then through the certificate of compliance process, um, whatever the user happens to be, uh, they have to pull permits if they're proposing changes to the interior space of the building. So mentioned environmental and natural resources have reviewed and approved. Uh, the township recommendation, um, storage of material in backup building, which again we showed was to the east of the building. Um, lighting per county ordinance, uh, lighting would only be on the building in this circumstance. Um, here they reference the business hours, seven AM to six PM. Um, they mentioned welding, I think because one of the potential businesses is a plumbing business, so welding inside the building only. Um, and outdoor storage of semi trailers not allowed, um, we've talked about that. Um, I guess I would invite the applicants up to discuss, um, the types of vehicles that they work on, the customization, uh, the service that they do, how long vehicles are, you know, our assumption is that somebody brings their vehicle there to get repaired, they're gonna want it back in fairly short order, um, so there would be limited, um, storage of vehicles outside. And then rental base shall be mechanic type business only. Um, again, we would review any potential business to make sure that it fits with the RBR. Uh, their narrative indicated, uh, car repair, woodworking, plumbing, and similar type businesses, so as long as it would fit under the RBR, uh, district, um, it would, again, any application would be reviewed by the township, so any of those certificates would be forwarded to the township for their review and comment. Um, staff is recommending approval of the request. Oh, I should note, again, going back to the trips, um, based on the type of business, the trip generation, and four bays, uh, light industrial, uh, they anticipate fifteen trips each, uh, for each of the bays, so sixty total, uh, with this type of use potentially, but again, with the other uses. Um, if they're service, uh, plumbing type business, it could be less, but, um, we would review those to make sure they're consistent with the traffic study. Um, staff is recommending approval. Ann, for any questions, or if the applicants wish to come up and answer questions, they certainly can.
If you could have the applicant.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about what your business is and...
Sure. Well, this is a new venture for us. Um, I'm recently, uh, retired professional, and so we are, we are primarily will be for small engine repair. Um, we wanted to make sure that, given the local industry, that, that we were able to have a building that was, um, could serve a semi and store semi, so we fully expect that there be some of that interest in the building that we have. Um, but it doesn't mean that we wouldn't entertain other small businesses. For semis, I mean, particularly for the services there, it, all of the work would be done inside the building, so there would not be anything done outside the building. Um, could be boom repair, remounts, custom body and steel fabrications, um, and any kind of cylinder repairs, you know, multiple different types of, um, specialized services that semis require. Um, but if there are other businesses that are interested in leasing the other spaces, the examples provided were maybe woodworking potentially, could be plumbing, um, and all of the work or repair services would be done in, inside of the building at all times.
So, and staff was saying that their, the patient is that, uh, storage of semis, there would be moving through this, if people come in and have their vehicles repaired and then taken back, right? Is that what you're talking about for storage or for semi parking there?
Semi rep, yeah, well, for repair and, and parking.
Yeah.
So there could be, there could be people coming in to, to park their semi there.
Questions to the applicant? Thank you, there may be further questions?
Sure.
Public hearing, anyone would like to make application, or make, uh, comments, rather? Step up to the podium.
Again, Greg Silas, live on the north side of Fieldstone. And, uh, again, uh, with the mention of semis, parking of semis, goes against the RBR twenty dash four. Now, there's been some interpretation of it, but again, as, uh, some of my neighbors mentioned, the rules, I mean, if it says no semis, it's no semis. And we would ask you not to approve this. Simple stuff.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comment? Point out, close the public hearing.
Chair, I'm removing this.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Robbie. All in favor of what, aye?
Aye.
Need a motion or discussion on this item?
Uh, discussion. Are we going to mention anything about, again, the township, let's put on hours of operation, which we know is not right? You did talk about welding inside only, but the applicant said everything was inside. Um, the reference of table four, are doing that. Um, I mentioned that the rental base shall be mechanic type business only. The applicant said it could be woodworking, plumbing business, which, yeah, that is allowed, correct? Right?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, um, I think the applicant has represented their business for the types of work they're due, and she indicated that that would be within the building. Um, so the CUP specifically cites their narrative, and so she's stated that publicly. So then the other uses that Commissioner Johnson references, as they would get their certificate of compliance, we can certainly make that a condition on those two that all, if it is a welding business or what have you, that, that work is done within the building as well, so we, we definitely can do that.
On that, I will move to, based on the criteria for approval, as this staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use of semi industry LLC. Construction operate a multi-tenant building to include a truck service, and repair businesses and lease space for other rural businesses.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Henshaw. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for vote, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes. The next public hearing is a request for a conditional use permit to construct and operate a truck repair and transport business, number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine zero, section thirteen, Newmarket Township, for zoning and RBR, and Mr. Smith will be making these staff report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. On the screen is the site location map for the property in Fieldstone Industrial Park, lot six, block two. Property of Butts County Road sixty-two on the north, and then Larson Way on that east, the west side there. As you can see from the aerial photograph, the site is currently, or was previously, used for agricultural purposes, with no physical trees or anything on the site. So, the site plan, Greg? So, the applicant owns GNS Truck and Trailer Repair, which is a repair facility for his own trucks. He also owns GNS Transport. At the, at present time, he will own anywhere from forty to fifty trucks, own or lease forty to fifty trucks throughout the year. His primary customers are the US Post Office and Amazon. The lead seven of trucks work for the US Post Office, are run mail, and those trucks come and go on a daily basis. The Amazon trucks usually are more over the road trucks, where they'll pick up a load and be gone for a number of days, up to three weeks, before they return to the site. When they return to the site, the applicant does all the maintenance on those trucks, everything from brakes, oil changes, tire work, to engine transmission work, body work. Sounds like everything, as far as maintenance or repair on those trucks, the applicant does. The applicant does not do work for other folks' trucks, it is purely vehicles that he owns and leases. They anticipate, and the applicant can speak to this, they anticipate approximately twenty trucks on the site at any one time, but obviously that can vary depending upon what loads are out and what trucks are out on run. The applicant is proposing to create parking for forty-five trucks at this time, that's what they're showing on the site plan here. There is future gravel parking area shown to the north, that would increase the number of trucks they could store here to eighty-three. I don't know if there's any intention to go to that in near future, but at present time, it would be the forty-five truck spaces that would be created. Want to go to the landscape plan, Greg? So, the landscape plan requires, I believe, with seventy-six landscape units for this particular site. The applicant is concentrating on locating deciduous trees along Larson Lane there, and then some more densely stuff down by the building. He's also, as part of the plot, the planning commission and board requires the applicant to install a berm with six-foot evergreens on the north side of the property adjacent to County Road sixty-two. The applicant can probably speak to where he's at in the process of creating that berm and planting those trees later on here, but with those trees and the ones that the applicant has included, he far exceeds the seventy-six landscape units that we require for a site like this. This applicant has also expressed the desire to fence the storage area with a six-foot chain link fence, with the screening slats, for both security reasons and for screening reasons. Go to the next. So, the building itself would be ninety by a hundred, nine thousand square feet. Interior floor plan includes some offices, bathrooms, reception area, and then there would be four bays on the building. This building would be used totally by GNS Truck and Trailer Repair to maintain the The building exterior would be similar to those other buildings in the subdivision in those photos that Greg has showed you from, from the other requests. Environmental Health has reviewed the septic site, and as with the other ones, they are finding them to be acceptable. They will do a more detailed look at those when the permits come in for the building permit for the building and the septic system. Natural Resources has reviewed the grading for this particular site in relation to the grading that was done and the stormwater plan for the Fieldstone Industrial Plot, and has found it consistent. And then the township recommendation. Township recommended no freight terminal for twenty dash four, county table. There is no freight being brought to the site, so there won't be any freight brought here, there won't be anything unloaded here, there won't be anything transferred here, is my understanding. So, it's not a freight terminal, it's more a repair facility, storage facility for these No truck stop per RBA, this is not a truck stop, it's the storage and repair of those vehicles. Repair of customer-owned trucks only, that is my understanding, that this is not going to be a service facility for anyone else's trucks, it's to maintain the trucks that he owns and leases. No trailer storage for twenty dash four, RBA zone. Here again, per table twenty dash four, we do allow outsourced storage, accessory to a principal use, and that's the way the staff is viewing this. But it limit operations to twenty trucks, Monday through Friday, hours seven AM to six PM. We didn't put a limit on the number of trucks out there, based on the parking area they're designing, they could accommodate up to forty-five trucks initially. Hours of operation, I think we've been over that, staff would recommend hours of operation for this particular use. Lighting rear storage per other CUPs, if there is any lighting in the storage area, the applicant will allow this, submit those light intensity diagrams that show that lighting is in compliance with our zoning standards. And then traffic study to include semi trucks. We did show county highway department, traffic analysis that was done for this meeting that you received here, that this particular use, I believe, would generate about seventy-seven... For the, for the study, this use would generate seventy-six trips per day, when that is looked at overall in relation to the traffic study that was done for the development, the highway department felt, yes, that is consistent with what they reviewed, part of the, part of the plot analysis. That concludes my presentation, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smith at this time? Applicant like to make comment on their application?
My name is Yasmin Yusuf, GS Transport Express and GS Truck and Trailer Repair, is family-owned, and currently, we're running the trucks, so we might need forty-six, but it's old because not all the time is going to be forty, because they have to work, work with the headliners stuff, but right now, they are in like truck stops and drivers don't maintain, we need to see the vehicle at least three weeks, so we can make necessary repairments to it, and so we can be compliant with FMCA, so that our trucks don't be stopped at the, on the road and be found, some minor stuff in, in compliance with the FMCA ticket, and like our safety score to go high, we don't want that. So, the reason is, we want to have all the repairs will be indoor, nothing will be outdoor. And currently, we are doing the same thing in Shakopee, but it's just a smaller space, and we don't get to see our trucks, all our trucks, at least three weeks. We'll have, we have to travel and send the mechanics out to where the truck is and then fix it, and go on the road when it's tough, so we're trying to avoid that, so we could have a place that we can fix, and then it's take on the road.
Chairman, where are you located now in Shakopee?
Highway one oh one and, what, what's that? Yeah.
Any questions, applicant? Thank you very much.
Oh, me also.
Public hearing, anyone would like to make comment at this time?
Ann Lynn Gren again. I'm looking for just a little bit of clarification, I guess. The table twenty dash four, there seems to be a little bit of confusion as to, it's not a, I've heard a couple of commissioners review, referred to it as RBR twenty dash four, and it's actually, the county, from my understanding, is that is the county for all zoning districts, right? That is what the county has said for all zoning districts, and that it was created in two thousand, twenty-ten, was that correct? So, being that RBR was just brought up, created in twenty-twenty, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. This RBR column, am I correct in assuming that that was then, this table was then amended at that point to include RBR? Is that correct? And so, I just, I'm confused as to who was involved in the creating, what goes into these different areas, and if it's our planning commission, or our planning, the gentleman over here, it sounds to me like you're not following what you intended a year ago. And so, I just need some clarification as to why that is occurring, that if you created this or added the column for RBR a year ago, it's clearly not being followed, and we're hearing all kinds of different ways where the staff is viewing it this way, or staff is viewing it that way. Obviously, staff is not viewing what they thought RBR was a year ago, if they're not agreeing with the own column that they put on the table, and that's very confusing to me, and if I could have some clarification at some point, that would be beneficial. Also, in the letter that was given to the, from the, is it BOAT? Is that correct? Okay. It states in here that they are repairing customers' trucks in their letter to the township and to, and to you as the planning commission. I need clarification on that as well, because in the information from the county planners that are sitting here, it says that they are repairing only their own trucks, and yet in the letter, it says you're repairing customer trucks, so if we could have some clarification on that as well.
Both issues, thank you very much. Could have staff respond to the first issue on, would be the, um...
So, here again, is that use matrix that is in the ordinance that was updated when we adopted the RBR district. When, when we did that, we had multiple workshops with planning commission, and we presented this information, and we also presented it to the board at that time, so that's when this, this was developed, was when the RBA district was, was initiated. In the RBR district, yes, there, there is this section with outdoor parking of semi trucks and trailers, and that's only allowed as accessory uses in the I-one and I-two. But as Mr. Wagner said, with the first conditional use permit request tonight, we do have semi truck and trailer parking going on in ag districts. It is part of the ag equipment that farmers have, so there is outdoor parking of trucks within ag districts, and we've allowed that as accessory to the agricultural operations. In commercial districts, we have at least one truck stop, that's the Holiday Station at forty-one and one sixty-nine, there's semi tractor trailers parked out there most nights as part of their truck stop. So, we have been allowing those as accessory uses within other districts. We do have in the RBR district, outdoor storage accessory to a principal use, accessory use in the RBR district. And that's where we're looking at these semi trucks. If you look at the uses that were anticipated by the comprehensive plan, when we, when we updated that to include this RBA, RBR district, I'll just, it off the uses that are listed in the comp plan on a couple of occasions, that we would anticipate in this Typically, uses would include contractor yards, lumberyards, landscape supply businesses, commercial trucking companies, indoor storage or rental uses, leased commercial buildings, light manufacturing, warehousing, and wholesaling. Number of those uses would anticipate semi trucks.
In the comprehensive plan, my recollection of that, it was a long, arduous process, but it did include the public, and include a number of public meetings where people could show up, did it not?
Yeah, there was public hearings associated with it, and we did meet with, with specific townships related to changes we were making to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Applicant like to come up and speak to the question about whether vehicles not owned by the applicant's company would be repaired, if that was the intent.
So, us on the paper also said we have four to six employees, and there is no way that we're able to do all forty of ours, repairing four to six employees, can handle our own trucks. So, even if it's written on us, it's like we have season, when busy season, and when all our trucks are all maintained on the road, possibly, maybe, but majority, almost ninety-nine percent, it would be our truck, because we only have four to six employees.
Steve Castle again. In the conditional use permit application, in the applicant's letter, it states that, in addition, I am the owner of GS Transport Express LLC, and will be using the space to park trucks while it is off duty. This letter, read top to bottom, makes it sound like the primary applicant is GNS Truck and Trailer Repair, when really, if you do some research into this, these companies, the primary business is the, the trucking company itself, and the forty trucks that are being operated for hire for the Post Office and Amazon. One question for the staff and the commission too, is, to date, have there been any RBR zone properties that have allowed outdoor parking of semi truck trailers? Um, I, I'll sit down and you can answer. Um, you also, should be in, in receipt of a, a letter, uh, from my attorney, um, that has gone through the zoning ordinance, including table twenty dash four again, and, uh, specifically states that the, the outdoor parking of semi-truck trailers is not allowed under the zoning ordinance. That, there, there is no accessory use under RBR. Um, staff had mentioned several times about the different, uh, industrial uses and accessory to that, but, um, uh, one, one point too, I would like to make that going all the way back to June, when we were notified about the plat, one of the first conversations I had with not only our town board members, but also I believe Greg Wagner, is that this was a set aside reserve for contractor lots. Okay? In those conversations, trucking company never came up. Okay? And the, um, I, I think it is a good idea to have an additional traffic study done to see if it's even feasible for semi-trucks to go in and out of this property. That's something that, that hasn't really been addressed yet by, by Scott County. So I, I guess in, in summary, I'll wait for an answer on that question, and I would hope that you read through this letter from my attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Fair response to that.
With regard to the letter from your attorney, we did not receive a letter from your attorney. Um, not on this one. We did receive the one on, uh, Green Automotive, but we didn't receive a letter from the attorney on, on this particular use. So we have not got a copy of that at this point.
You have copies of the okay to distribute?
With regard to the question revolving whether GS Transport or GS Truck and Trailer Repair is, is the applicant, it, it's a good question. Uh, right now, um, the gentleman's comment, we allow truck trailer repair facilities as a conditionally used permit in the RBR district. We don't have a line item for trucking company. There isn't a line item that would say trucking company in industrial, uh, RBR, commercial, anywhere in the ordinance. So there isn't a trucking company use, uh, in, in the table.
Have that letter?
I have five copies.
I'd also point out that it is referenced in the letter, Tom Grant.
Yep.
Again, but I think, you know, a lot of this has been centered around, well, it's an accessory use to a primary business. Um, I think just by definition, the trucking company is going to be parking semis in the yard. I think the average national auto service rate is roughly twenty percent. And so by definition, you have to park them. But to go further, even if for the sake of argument, outdoor parking of semi-trailers could be allowed by the RBR, and I think it's been very, we've been very clear that should be disputed. The CUP, CUP application should still be denied, because the applicant proposed, proposal demonstrates that the outdoor storage would be the principal use, not an accessory use. Here's what I mean by that. The applicant is actually conceding that it may use as much as one hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet of the site for outdoor storage. By contrast, less than ten thousand square feet of that site would be used for the truck repair. So when the applicant is stating that more than seventeen times the land area of this site is to be used for outdoor semi tractor, uh, tractor storage as opposed to truck repair, how can one reasonably say that falls within an accessory use definition? Um, so, you know, because outdoor storage of semi-trailers would clearly be the principal use of this site, I think any county, county allowance, parking semi-trailers as an accessory would be an inappropriate use of the land, and it's certainly inapplicable. I think I'd just like to call that out as this would be...
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, Greg Tylos again from, uh, north of, uh, Fieldstone. Wow, so I guess this one I would categorize as, uh, scope creep, particular cut. Um, forty-five to eighty semi, part tier? Never heard anything about like that when, you know, throughout the summer. And, uh, if, you guys have a picture of the layout of, uh, the property here? Uh, the red one you had up there, the, yeah. You know, we drive by this property multiple times a day, and if you look to the south, there, there's no screening there. And so if, if you guys pass this, which I would, if I was in your guys' shoes, I'd, I'd really be wondering about this one. I mean, if, if literally if I was in your role, I don't know how I could pass this one, because, uh, twenty dash four, no semi. That is what this one's gonna be clearly used for, and the whole neighborhood's gonna be looking at this every day when they go drive by it. There's no screening there. And if, I don't know if the guy, Messenbrink, can speak to how the screening's there, but I'm not quite sure if he's gonna do any more landscaping there, screening, because it seems like that particular area, ditch and a water thing, and there's, there's nothing there. And I don't think he's gonna be putting more dirt there, so. Uh, yeah. Yeah, if I was in your guys' shoes, I, this one I'd really concerned about approving, and I would ask you to at least do a thirty day stay on it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's, uh, Dan Pingle, um, Cleveland neighborhood to the north is development. Um, just wanna add one more thing, keep talking about these accessories to the business. Tom pointed out as far as how the square footage being used versus, for the trailer storage versus the repair work. I mean, another way to look at this is, okay, how is their income generated? It is not, as the applicant has noted, not going to be from repairing vehicles, these trucks. Their income is from getting the trucks on the road and moving goods. So that is the principal reason for this business. And the repair is just because they have to maintain, you know, keep the trucks running. And one other point, just I wanted to reiterate and remind everyone, and I don't know what Scott County can say about this, but I know that the road to the east, you know, turns into gravel and not have trucks or anything going that direction, going by the neighborhood. It's not rated for these, any of these vehicles that we're talking about for any of these businesses.
Comments?
I'd like to, uh, just clarify some issues on landscaping. There is no landscaping in yet.
Your name?
John Messenbrink.
Thank you, John.
Um, it probably won't go in for about three weeks yet. There's no berms in yet. We've got about, uh, two and a half to three weeks of grading left. The township road is in. We're ready to make the connection to the county road at two forty fifth. We met with the township engineer about a week ago, and there's some excess black dirt on the site, and we're gonna raise the berm along two hundred and forty fifth about another six feet. So instead of being six feet high, it's gonna be closer to ten to twelve, and then the trees will go on top of that. But it, that probably won't happen for two to three weeks yet. Uh, it should be done before it freezes, but the, uh, and you have the plan. The only difference that you're gonna see on the plan, you, it shows all the landscape, the trees, everything. The only difference is it's gonna be about six to eight feet higher than what we had anticipated. Um, the rest of it, I don't think there's a whole lot of changes. That berm will run the full length of two hundred and forty fifth street, just like it shows on our plan right now, and across the backside of the next ten acre lot. Now, it was a ten acre lot. It was smaller at one time, because we were trying to put in a community septic, but you can see where the septics are in that lot. That's the only place we could get them approved, so it ended up being a bigger lot, and so did the lot next to it, um, right to the east. They're bigger because of the septic sites that, uh, we had to put in there. But I don't think you're gonna see anything from the road. I, I don't know how you could. I mean, we've had a drone simulator flight, I don't know if the board saw it, but we did it at six feet, and you could only see the top of this particular building from the road. We since moved that building from the middle of the lot all the way to the south end of the lot, right there. The building used to be about where the number two is, and we pulled it all the way back down. The trucks themselves aren't gonna generate a lot of noise, but I, the, the shop may, you know, where they repair them. The trucks come in, from my understanding, they've got six to seven trucks that haul, uh, postal mail every day. They go in and out every day, and then the rest of them are on a one week to a three week cycle. They leave, they'll either be gone up to a week or up to three weeks before they come back. Um, traffic study that we redid included all the semis on every single lot in there, and that was given to the county, uh, highway department about a week ago, which I think the guys have it in their report. Um, but if you got any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? We may have some, so, thank you. Thanks for clarification on that.
What about the trucks? I've, we talked about the traffic study, but I, I haven't heard anybody really discuss the logistics of literally, you know, business like this, I, I can imagine, early in the morning, a lot of trucks rolling out at the same time, everyone's starting to work at the same time. The logistics of, there's literally not much room. They turn left, they head west on two forty fifth, and we, maybe you can get two trucks, and that's it.
I mean, for the traffic loading.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they just, they would have to wait, they, you know, it'd be a log jam, and then, I just, the logistics of that, just, that seems problematic to me, and no one's ever discussed that at all.
My, I've heard forty some trucks mentioned, and I've heard eighty trucks mentioned. That's two real different numbers to me.
Oh.
Could we put a limit on the number of trucks, or?
Yeah, I think you, I, I think we could do that.
Yeah, I think they should have a reasonable expectation that they know how many trucks there're gonna be.
So right now, what we're being told is they have between forty and fifty trucks owned and leased throughout the year. However, they may grow in the future to that eighty number, eighty-three. So you, you could limit it, and if they exceeded that limit, then they would have to come back and reopen, potentially, if it, if it got to that, got to that level. More comments on this application? Point I'll entertain the motion, please close this public hearing. Question by Commissioner Henson, sir, have a second? Question by Commissioner Johnson. Question or action on this item?
This discussion item, do we wanna talk about some limits that Commissioner Henson's brought up, uh, have them come back again if they're going to exceed those numbers?
I would really like to see that, that way we've got some control over what's going on, and all of a sudden it just doesn't double overnight.
I would agree with that. Have a motion?
No, uh, that limit, I mean, like us can't just throw a number out, uh, have to have more, uh, input. Applicant, if you did decide to go...
Well, why don't we ask the applicant, Marty suggested fifty for now, and if it goes beyond that, then they would have to come back to the planning department.
Yep, can you talk to her for a second?
We have some questions. Um, trucks, they go to different states.
Yeah.
So they're gonna be coming and going different days of the week, different hours of the night.
Different time, yes.
It's not like a bad rush at seven AM.
No.
No.
No. They will be all over across the state, and only seven will be working, Chicago to Minnesota, and DHL, so they're busy picking and dropping and picking and dropping. They only come when they need the service. And we say up to eighty, because we're not sure, in case the business picks up and we add more, that's why we said, but we don't even own that money now, and we own, we lease some, but we own about twenty and we lease some, and that's what we have so far, but nothing, the number, my scared everyone here, eighty or more, but the place is big and the last off you can see is huge, and we can just do maybe, we can't suggest any limit you guys put us to it, but our plan is twenty-five to fifteen, forty is what we're running now, but, um...
With, uh, the drivers, are they kinda like, um, owner operators, or they're like in a partnership with you?
No. All are hired by us, no owner operator.
They're all employees?
Yes.
Yeah, did you say that five, all the local service?
No, DHL, so Chicago to Minnesota.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Would it, um, would it work for you to put eleven to fifty trucks on, start, and if you wanted to go beyond that, then you would...
Come back here again?
Yes.
Yeah, of course, yes, definitely.
So what, uh, just for some clarification, Donna, you mentioned fifty trucks sitting there at once.
No, that's, that would not happen, because they have to go work and make money, they have to be on the road.
Talking about fifty trucks that they own, regardless of where they are. And when they get beyond that, that increases the table, because then they'd be sitting in a lot, I would think, at some point.
For holiday season, they're all working and most likely not be at the site, you know?
Yeah.
At, at time, at most, maybe twenty, um, ten, seven, because we only have three workers as engineers, mechanics are hard to get, to be honest, like you can't get them, we are keeping, paying extra to them and repairing, because safety is core, I guess, at our business, we have to maintain those trucks, so...
So how many, how many...
Today is four, I believe, correct?
How many, how many trucks would you think would be in the lot and not moving at any one time, you know, in for repair or just not out on the road, generally, you know?
Now, the one bit that we have in Shakopee, we have in a, about, like, now it's six, so maybe when we have a bigger space, maybe... So maybe when we have a bigger space, maybe up to fifteen.
And, and what the report says is a storage lot for forty-five, but the building did increase to eighty-three at some point in the future. Um, that, when we talk about the storage capability and that, but the scope of number of trucks going in, how there's going to be, is what I would consider letting it through now. And then they would come back if they wanted, they thought that their operation was growing and they needed more.
Permit now, how, by?
This, this application says in the report, exactly, it says, Appicus is proposing to develop a storage lot for forty-five trucks. Ability to expand eighty-three trucks in the future.
And I heard you say that forty-five trucks sometimes only translate into twenty or twenty-five that are in the lot. I think, would you live with that for now?
Forty-five, I would say forty-five, and if they, they need more storage and it's appropriate, then then they would come back. I would limit it that way. Motion.
Thank you.
Yeah. Cool, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit for Gudana Osat Construction Operator Truck Repair and Transport Storage Business in the Grove Business Reserve District. Um, I'll leave it up to, what was the, what was the addendum to that? Limit on numbers? Forty-five total? Forty-five owned? That description looking at?
Yeah.
Storage lot, yeah.
Does that mean that you can lease more?
So i- is, is the amendment that you would limit the number of trucks they own and lease to forty-five and the number they can store on the lot to forty-five as well? Is that what you're saying, or just forty-five cutouts on the storage lot? I would suggest we make that as a separate sixteenth condition, if that's what the, my commission's desire is.
Yep. And we need any other clarification to that? We understand what we're voting on? Do you understand my motion, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I understand the motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second? I have a motion on the table. By, uh, Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Hemsworth. Any further discussions at this time? If there are none, I'll, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Our next public hearing is Messenbrink Construction at the applicant, twenty twenty-one, zero nine one. Request for conditional use permit to construct and lease a building to a landscape account and tracking company with outdoor storage and welding repair business. Second thirteen new market, uh, township, and, uh, Mr. Wagner will be making the staff report.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the site location map shows a lot to block one, Fieldstone Industrial Park. So this lot is on the west side of the, uh, property, abutting County Road forty-six or Pillsbury Avenue off of Larson Lane. Uh, okay, so here's the area of the property, um, south line, uh, just to remind the commission, there is the overhead power line that runs along the south area. So, uh, Messenbrink, Messenbrink Construction is requesting the conditional use permit. Uh, they would be the CUP holder that would allow them to lease out to, uh, another business. In this case, they are proposing to lease out to a lan- landscape contractor company with associated outdoor storage. And then the second, uh, business that they are aware of, uh, creating space for would be a welding repair business. Um, the building, uh, would be located in the northeast corner of the site. Um, eighty-four hundred square feet would be indoor storage, uh, repair area for the landscape contractor and eleven hundred square feet of office. And then the north twenty-five, or twenty-eight hundred fifty square feet, uh, would be leased to the welding repair business. Um, as indicated, the C, uh, Messenbrink would be the CUP holder, and the two tenant businesses would be required under the CUP to obtain the certificate of compliance, uh, to understand they abide by the conditions that govern their operations. Um, so with this site plan, uh, entrance off of Larson Lane, uh, employee parking, customer parking in the front, uh, so the building, uh, would be here. Uh, and then vehicles would access the outdoor storage area, which would be to the, um, to the west and south of the building. Uh, septic sites were identified, uh, and preserved through the grading. And then the drainage for the site generally goes to the stormwater facilities, uh, that would be on the south side of the property, uh, shown here on the site plan. Um, with the landscaping and screening, uh, the, the landscaping would be focused, uh, around the front of the site and the front parking area with the deciduous trees and the shrubs. And then along the county road, uh, would be the solid line of the evergreen trees. Um, across the road to the west is RBR Zone Property, so they technically don't have to screen that, but most, uh, commercial industrial businesses, uh, do screen their outdoor storage area from public roads. Um, so this is the floor plan of the building, so the, the main contractor, uh, would have the southern portion, uh, with their offices, and then the north side would be the welding repair business. Um, elevation of, again, what the building would look like. Um, with the contractor business and the welding repair business, um, again, the hazardous waste licensure would be required as part of their certificates. And the township recommendation, uh, storage of materials and equipment in the back of the building. Uh, lighting per county ordinance will not shine outside a parking lot. Uh, again, lighting would only be on the building at this point. Um, and then berm and further proof grading plan, so they're going to, because there's the power lines along the east and, and south, they can't really elevate, so they're doing fencing and the, the trees. Um, and then we've talked about the business hours, I think, uh, a number of times. This would be another seasonal business, um, at least the landscape contractor, so probably mid-April to probably mid-October. Um, so seasonal, again, the welding business, we're assuming is more, more year-round. Um, with that, staff has recommended approval. Uh, Mr. Messenbrink is here, if he would have questions, um, on the operations of the landscape contractor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wagner at this time? Mr. Messenbrink, did you want to say anything about the, uh, building, the applicant?
John Messenbrink. I guess I can answer any questions. There isn't much to this one.
Anyone have any questions?
I was just wondering on, off County Road forty-six, we have landscaping on basically the southwest side. Is there, is there trees along that very southern end there?
No, and that, that's the side of the road that we've got to lower the ditch for the county.
Okay.
That, that whole side is going to look a lot different in about two weeks.
Lower that ditch, yeah.
Yeah. That grading will stop just past that white parking area right now. The grading, I think it goes down about eight hundred feet. We've got to lower that down, which I think you have the plan for that.
Help with the site, right?
Yeah. But we've got to get the, all the utilities have to be lowered in there before we can do that.
Okay.
Um, which they're working on right now. Once they're lowered, then we can get the grading done there. But it should be done late this fall. But there isn't, uh, there isn't many trees just along the, that southernly edge there where the back of the lot borders up to it, right there. That lot sits quite a bit lower than the, than the, uh, county road does along there. But the building is right up, right up next to the road. I don't know if, I don't think you can see that building real well from the, from the main road. Most of the buildings except the lot right there. That lot, you're going to be able to see the building. We did have the pad built in the back, right where that white dot is, but we moved the pad up to the front, which is probably a better idea because that building will screen everything. There's no screening on that side because of the stop sign.
Yeah.
But we're going to move the building on that lot up to the north side, and that should screen everything back to the south. All you'd see is the front of the building there.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's a public hearing. Anyone who would like to make comments, come up to the podium at this time. Um, someone's going up to the podium, someone on line. Uh, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So we'll, motion by Commissioner Huber, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Hemsworth. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion for discussion on this at this point.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval, this is the staff report, I recommend approval of conditional use permits for most great construction, construct at least a building to the landscape contracting company with outdoor storage and welding repair business.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ravi. Any discussion at this point? If there are none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, sixth, uh, in the board. The next item we have this evening is public hearing on the twenty-four comprehensive, twenty forty comprehensive plan amendment, Unified Transit Management Plan, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty. Brad Davis, our planning manager, will be, uh, making the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, tonight we have before you a proposed amendment to the twenty forty comprehensive plan. It's to incorporate the transit study that was done by the county and, um, many of our communities. And I've, I've provided the executive summary in your packet of the, uh, study. And the two staff that worked on this, uh, report are on the line, and it's Nathan Abney, our, uh, transportation planner, Craig Jensen, our other transportation planner. So Craig and Nathan are going to walk you through the documents, share the same presentation that was delivered to our cities, our townships, and to scale. Um, this is a public hearing. We'll see if there is any comments on it, and this is just, uh, one step in the plan amendment process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nathan.
Thanks, Brad. Um, am I able to share my screen? Um, we have a PowerPoint presentation. All right, there we go. All right, can you see that okay?
Yeah, we see it and hear you well, Nathan.
Okay, perfect. Um, so, uh, like Brad said, uh, my name's, uh, Nathan Abney. I'm a transportation planner at, uh, Scott County, um, and we've been working on, uh, the Unified Transit Management Plan, uh, for two and a half years now, and it's finally coming to an end. Um, so actually, turn it over to Craig Jensen, um, our transportation planning manager, and he'll, uh, kick off the presentation this evening.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Uh, we're just going to give a quick, uh, presentation on the transit plan and kind of what are some of the highlights in the transit plan, um, before kind of moving on with the, the comp plan amendment. Uh, go to the first slide. So, real briefly, uh, in two thousand and five, we, the county had approved their first, uh, Unified Transit Management Plan. That really looked at, um, kind of setting the vision and for the future of transit in Scott County. Uh, and that really led to a lot of growth. The transit stations that you see, the increased service that's out there, that really kind of, um, that plan really started all of that. And since we accomplished a lot of those, um, goals in the plan, we started to, um, update that plan, or at least, you know, kind of see where we could go with, with kind of that next vision for, uh, transit for the next ten to fifteen years. Um, and this, this plan really looks at a whole range of mobility solutions. Uh, next slide. So, in twenty eighteen, we, we started the plan and, and developed, uh, steering committee that to really guide the, the goals of the, of that Unified Transit Management Plan. There was representative from each of the Scott County cities, like a council member from each of the cities. Uh, there was a township representative, uh, representing all the townships. Um, there was some local citizen participation and some other service providers. Uh, next, next page. So really, the, um, we, you know, got into it, we developed goals, um, real quick, some of the goals is really wanting to know what the, the needs and limitations are of, um, the, the plan, or at least for transit. We really needed to, you know, understand what are, what are some innovative solutions? What's those emerging technologies, uh, and other options out there? Um, you know, what are some of the, the collaboration and partnership opportunities that are out there? And, and really just, you know, want to make sure that any transit that, that's out there is, is serving the, the workforce and accessibility needs. Next slide. So, said we made some progress, uh, actually, I think, um, we were probably eight months into it, and then, um, COVID hit. And, uh, the, what you see on the screen is just an example of the impact of COVID, uh, to transit. Um, the green line is actually twenty nineteen ridership for MBTA. The yellow line is that drop you see, starting around March, uh, for transit ridership, and, and it, it had a huge drop. There was still, um, some transit service, and you, you can kind of see it just, it's, it drops and then it just kind of flattens out. Really going to show that the people that, that absolutely need transit are, are the ones that are, that are still using transit. Next slide. This, I think Nathan, you're going to take over?
Yep. Um, so the next part of our presentation is just briefly, uh, going over, uh, the different chapters of the plan and some of the recommendations and analysis that we did. Uh, so starting off, uh, land use, population and employment, uh, in this chapter, um, and the recommendations approach transit needs in the county, uh, through geographic distribution and people and places and the movements among them. Uh, so in this chapter, we looked at a variety of things, uh, one of them being, um, our aging population within the county, um, especially the age sixty-five and older. We know that this age group is going to double by twenty forty, so we really wanted to, uh, focus on that to see how we can better meet that growing need of transit, um, in the future for this, um, age group within the county. Uh, we also looked at youth populations and how to get them engaged, uh, more with transit within the county. Uh, we looked at twenty forty land use destinations to see how that could coincide with transit planning. Uh, we looked at those populations that rely on transit, um, those without a car, those living under the federal poverty level, um, and identifying those areas within the county. Um, and then lastly, we looked at employment, uh, to see how we could better meet the needs of our employers, um, and, uh, their employers within the county. Um, the next, uh, chapter is local fixed route and microtransit. Uh, this chapter and the recommendations focus largely on addressing the needs, um, of transit in our urban areas. Um, within this chapter, we looked at our existing service such as MBTA, uh, that's the fixed route service within the county. Uh, we also looked at land to air, which is a regional, uh, fixed route service that runs from Mankato to downtown Minneapolis. Uh, that makes several stops, uh, within Scott County, um, every day, uh, in the city of Jordan, Bell Plain and Shakopee. So just looking at that and how we could better utilize that service. And then we also looked at Mystic Lake. Um, they have a very large transit network, um, all over the metro and beyond, uh, that they utilize for bringing not only, uh, patrons, uh, to the casino, but also their employees. So how can we, uh, kind of tap into that service, uh, to meet the needs of transit within the county? And then we looked at alternative services as well, um, such as the Northfield Express, and then looking at our entertainment venues. And then we looked at alternative services as well, um, such as the Northfield Express and then looking at our entertainment venues. Uh, next, we looked at mobility management, uh, demand responsive and emerging technology, uh, when it comes to transit. Uh, this chapter focus, focuses primarily on our urban and rural areas with the county. Uh, so we looked at our existing, uh, dial ride service and, uh, evaluated that. And to see if there was areas of opportunity to transform that, uh, for future demand. We also looked at, um, on-demand services, um, and private providers, uh, such as like Uber and Lyft, maybe supplementing, um, a transit need within the county. And then we also looked at our other services, uh, such as, uh, non-emergency medical transport, volunteer drivers. Just to see, uh, the future use of those services within the county. Uh, next is local transit supportive infrastructure. Uh, this chapter and the recommendations focus on capital investments that contribute to the success of transit within the county. Uh, in this chapter, we evaluated our parking rides and looked at future uses, uh, for those. Uh, we also looked at first last mile solution, so how do we connect people, uh, to their final destination, uh, once they get off the bus? Um, and identifying, uh, gaps within the network. Uh, we looked at transit advantages such as bus only shoulders or priority signals within the county. And then lastly, we looked at the concept of a mobility hub, um, which would be a transit station that, uh, goes beyond just fixed route, but has a, a variety of different amenities, uh, for users. So such as, you know, bike sharing, uh, car sharing, um, and then a better, uh, connected transit network. Uh, next, we looked at regional transit service and facility development. Uh, this chapter and the recommendations address the important regional connections, um, that transit currently provides, uh, within Scott County. And then we also looked at, uh, connections that currently weren't being met, uh, within the county. Uh, so we looked at a lot of different things regionally in this chapter, uh, such as the Dan Patch Corridor, uh, the one sixty-nine Transit Way and the recommendations that came out of the one sixty-nine mobility study, connecting to those Orange and Green Line, uh, regional transit networks that are coming online soon. Uh, County Highway forty-two. Um, and then connecting with our surrounding, uh, counties such as Lister and Carver, and how we can, um, better strengthen our transit network with them. And then lastly, we looked at funding and governance. Uh, this chapter looked at the existing streams of revenue, um, that provide direct and indirect benefits, uh, to Scott County Transit. Uh, this chapter also looked at funding priorities and governmental frameworks. Uh, so we looked at federal, state, regional, local funding, um, and where those are kind of going in the future and how it's going to affect, uh, transit within the county. Uh, we looked at our governance system and to see how we could, um, shape that in the future. And then we looked at possibly forming, uh, this committee into a scale, uh, transportation committee. So, uh, the sex side just goes over, um, a couple of key takeaways from, from the plan itself. Um, we know that the county is going to continue to grow. So we wanted to make sure in this plan, we looked at, um, a variety of services, not just fixed route transit, but going beyond that, uh, to see how we can, uh, grow transit holistically within the county to meet the need. Next is the, the aging population, we know that sixty-five and older, um, that cohort's gonna double by twenty forty. So how do we address that need when it comes to transit? Um, and then just reiterating again that we looked at a range of mobility solutions, uh, to improve the quality of life through transit improvements within the county. Uh, when it comes to funding, we noted that, uh, funding sources are constrained and they're, they're going to continue to be, uh, constrained. So we need to really, um, look at alternative options, um, and evaluate those options to see if there's a better funding source, uh, for transit within the county. We also identified that partnership is key, uh, to providing successful transit. So we need to continue to work with our transit providers, um, when it comes to, uh, meeting the needs of our residents within the county. And then lastly, just kind of reiterating what Craig said, is that this plan, uh, is going to be an opportunity, driven document for the next ten to fifteen years. So we wanted it to be kind of open-ended, so when opportunities, uh, would arise, we would be able to take advantage of them, uh, when it comes to transit planning within the county. Next, I'll turn it back over to Craig and he'll go over where we're going.
Okay, so, um, let's see, we're here today at the, um, Plan Commission Public Hearing. Before this, we had presented, um, um, this transit plan to every city council over the summer. We presented this to scale and we've presented this to the Township Association or Annual Meeting there. So, uh, we've had, um, plenty of engagement, um, and we are now kind of moving this forward, uh, for the, the public hearing. We'll have, be sending this out to the cities after this meeting for their, uh, required sixty-day review. Then it will go to the, um, after the, the board submits this, we'll get this to the Met Council and then get final approval. Oh, and I forgot to mention that we also did have a, a board workshop, um, as well, so on this topic. So, that's kind of the, 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 what, the process and where we're at and where we're going. We're here for any questions, otherwise we can turn it over to, to Brad if he wanted to kind of summarize what needed.
Alright, thank you Craig and Nathan, so that's an overview of the, uh, plan. We are going through the formal amendment process, that's why we're required to hold a public hearing here tonight. And, uh, we think if the Met Council then, uh, does that amendment, that the Met Council then formally approving the, we definitely have some benefits for future grants, for some policy meetings. They formally recognize the county's transit plan. So that's the, the background. Uh, but this is a public hearing, Mr. Chair, if you would then formally open the public.
Uh, opening the public hearing at this time, I'd like to make a comment. Part of the public. Um, I have a question for you, um, much of Scott County and, and much of our development at this point is large lots and, you know, um, big areas that don't lend themselves particularly well to transit corridors. And do you see in the future, um, as technology changes with vehicles, you know, more autonomous vehicles, and different kind of transportation solutions, that more traditional transit lines will become perhaps, not the main corridors that people are using. And especially in our environment where we could have, you know, we have relatively low density, um, townships, or the majority of our townships are, are pretty low density where people are spread out. And to actually get people to destinations, that that might be more of the solution. Or what do you see for that, I guess, in the future?
Well, I mean, I guess I can take a stab at it and Nathan, you can clean it up for me. But, y- that, that's kind of part of what we were looking at, we were looking at those, um, that, that future vision and what is that new technology that could really assist in, in some of that? And, and it's probably a ways out there, we, we want to make sure that, um, you know, transit is available someday in the future. And if we go to autonomous vehicles or, or something like that, it's, it's, the technology is just not there yet. I mean, that's, it's being worked on, um, but it's, it's something that, that could really free up, oh, a lot of, a lot of people and, and meet their mobility needs. And, um, as, as you saw that we were, are getting to be an older, little bit older county. Um, and we want to make sure those, those folks can stay in their homes as, as long as possible. And, and, and by doing that, trying to meet some of their mobility needs. In the interim, right now, we're, we're, we're trying to do, um, you know, um, something a little bit different. We're, we're implementing the, the hop, the hop Scott, um, uh, for some of the, this, a couple of the smaller communities, which is a, a van share, share, um, I guess, uh, whatever you would call it, a sharing van, I guess, that, that, that's run by volunteers. And it, it's something that's, it's different and helps supplement some of the other, uh, trans service that it, that's out there. But, uh, in the rural area, there, there isn't a, a, a lot of options other than, um, our dial ride. But that does have limitations as well.
And, uh, and you kind of hit on part of the issue is, uh, with an aging population, it becomes, uh, a little more difficult in the rural area. I have a friend who's, who's, uh, father's in his late eighties and, uh, he rolled his pickup truck, so they bought him another car. And they were so concerned about it that they put an app on his car that all of the kids can follow him around where he goes and, and see what he's doing with his car because they're so concerned about it. But it, it is really a problem because, you know, once people lose their mobility out in the country, um, they have no way to get to the grocery store or they can't walk out their door and walk down the street, you know? So it, it really isolates them, so just a, a challenge.
Yeah, we, we've definitely heard that, um, w- with our steering committee, um, and some of the outreach we've done. So we really wanted to, to see what we could do kind of for interim solutions, like Craig said, while we're waiting for this technology to, to come along. So, not only doing the hop Scott thing, but, you know, we're looking at maybe utilizing an app-based service where people can, you know, book a ride with our Smart Link, um, service. Cause right now you have to call and it's usually like a three-day, you know, scheduling timeframe that you have to do. So is there, there's something that we can do, uh, to make that faster and more on-demand for, for people, especially in the rural areas? We know that, uh, there, there obviously isn't transit there, so how can we better, um, better meet those needs, um, in the meantime?
Right.
Oh, this is Barbara Johnson, I have three things. The first one is, do you ever see, uh, substation perhaps, south on one sixty-nine or south on thirty-five? The Bell Plain area or the New Market, uh, Elko area, another substation, like you have in Shakopee?
Yeah, we actually, um, identified in the plan, um, uh, starting, you know, maybe identifying a lot, uh, by Elko, uh, that could be utilized for like a parking ride. Um, there is a private service that currently runs up, uh, thirty-five, uh, from Northfield, uh, to downtown Minneapolis several, uh, times during the day. So we looked at maybe utilizing that service, um, i- in the meantime, until we, uh, could maybe establish a pilot, uh, with MBTA or something. But looking at that service and kind of starting out and studying to see if that would be feasible or not.
My second question is, why did you include in a traffic or, uh, management transit report, race in our county? I just didn't think that was appropriate.
Why we, we, I'm sorry, what was the question?
In our, on our, um, traffic, unified traffic report, I don't know why you included race. I didn't think it was appropriate.
Oh, I, I think we just wanted to, to show generally the, the overall demographics of the county. Um, we didn't really go into, um, you know, any recommendations based off of that. It was more or less just, just to show generally the makeup of the county.
My last question was, we just had a rather contentious hearing and this affects everybody and not one person's fate. So, and yet they're always saying they don't get informed, they don't, they don't know. We slide all this through and they accuse us and the county and the, everybody and, so how do we get interest in this?
You're talking about interest in the, in the plan?
Yes, and, and public comment.
Um, well, we, w- we have a good partnership with our cities, um, cause each one had a member on our steering committee and they were all very involved. Uh, so we planned to send it out and get that representative involved for each decision. And then we also, uh, worked a lot with MBTA, uh, so I'm, I'm sure we're gonna get them involved too as we move forward with this process, as well as our Smart Link service within the county.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is Ray Huber, I just have a general couple of questions. I see you're trying to tie into a lot of the light rail that's coming down the line, like Southwest Light Rail and also the Mall of America, which is good. But I was just really curious, they talked a lot about the Dan Patch line, that's heavy rail. Would that ever happen coming out of Northfield?
Um, uh, maybe someday, it, it's, there needs, we first need to repeal the, the legislative, uh, restrictions on it so we can actually study it. So that's kind of the first step that's identified in the plan. Um, and then beyond that, it's probably beyond the timeframe of our plan. So we just wanted to kind of call out that first initial stage to, so we can study it to see if it's feasible or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? It's like, um, most of the public hearing. Motion, motion by Commissioner Huber, second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor of what I?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I, I need a motion, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Nope, we actually have to have a breath.
All done.
It's right here. Do you want to read this?
Mr. Chairman, after receiving a presentation on the draft and considering comments from the key stakeholders in public, I recommend county board approval of admitting the twenty forty comprehensive plan to incorporate the recently updated Unified Transit Management Plan.
I have a very articulate motion from Commissioner Watson, could I have a second? Second by Commissioner Huber, all in favor of vote aye?
Aye.
Uh, so, my next report real quick, um, September twenty-first, the board did approve your, uh, petition. To be filmed forty acres, three one, three three, Wayne and Jeanette Weldon were the applicants, that was in Lake Lees Township. Uh, last week, on October fifth, the board did approve the request for CUP to construct a natural gas metering and transfer station. If you recall, that was just outside of the city building. Uh, I have for an update.
Uh, getting back to that substation, um, we had, uh, farmer across the road. Tom Wolf met with him, with tape measure and measurements, he said were wrong. And, uh, actually, where that substation went, it could have been actually closer to the road had they wanted it to. So, my point is, you don't always have to believe everybody that comes up there. Okay, that's my.
I have a question too, now, our county attorney researched everything that was discussed tonight. Now, they have hired an attorney that's challenging all this. Do you feel that we have a strong ordinance in this twenty dash four?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Johnson, that was a lot of the huddling you probably saw over here, I really was going through that detail. The staff feel like we're in a really strong position for what we recommend. The letter that was handed out tonight, we have not seen before, so that difference, I'm gonna share that with our attorney doctors and, um, have further discussion with them on that. So when we get this to the board, we can talk about all the legal things. I see. Exactly, so, more to come, but up until this point, we feel no problem.
And Marty, you said, it doesn't allow trucking companies, I mean?
So right now, the table twenty dash four is filed when it comes to party companies, we don't have a line, I hope for the, uh, companies, but that's, we, it's interesting.
How did I get this?
Cause they're, uh, they're coaching the, the truck repair facility, uh, truck and trailer repair facility where they're all across. Commissioner Johnson, is that, how did you get it?
How did I get my business?
What were they permitted as, do you remember?
Oh, I'm in a commercial.
They're probably not there, yeah.
Cause it's identified as a truck.
The meeting over, I got, when the meeting's over, I got one more thing to say.
Uh, before we close, man, I just want to thank all the commissioners and staff, uh, for all the work on this. And, you know, it's, it's been, uh, a long haul over the last couple of meetings in the summer with our special meetings. And, um, it's a lot of dedication and, and, uh, you know, a lot of times these, uh, public hearings get contentious and, and everybody remains cool and calm and, and very professional. And that's a good reflection on the county and ends up with better results. With that, I'll entertain a motion, of course, if, are we done with the? With that, I'll entertain a motion to close. If, are we done with the, uh, entertain a motion to close this, uh, meeting? Right, Commissioner Ansh, so I have a second.
Second.
Second, make this watch and all in favor of what? Aye.
Aye.
We are closed.